All right, Commissioners, it's six o'clock. And if you're in the back, if you could please join us for our scheduled public hearing. We are, I think we're good to go. All right, Mr. Administrator, first item on our public hearing agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as requested at the July 8th meeting, the proposed ordinance, which is Attachment 1, amends Chapter 7, Section 7-44 of the Code of Laws for Leon County entitled, "Revising the Method for Collecting Fire Services or Fire Rescue Charges and Fees." The proposed ordinance revises the method of collection for fire rescue charges and fees in the unincorporated area with no changes in rates for 2026. If approved, the city would no longer be authorized to collect fire services fees and charges on utility bills or through quarterly billing in the unincorporated area. All properties in the unincorporated area would be billed by the county using the uniform method of collection through the annual property tax, non-governmental properties. Thank you. The fire assessment revenue collected by the county on property tax bills will continue to be remitted to the county to pay for fire rescues services provided in the unincorporated area. With that, we are recommending Options 1 and 2. We have two speakers on this issue. First speaker is Jason Moore.
Mr. Moore, name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak to you.
Hold on one second till that microphone comes on, or he can kind of get it closer to you.
Okay, how's that?
There you go.
Perfect. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you. My name is Jason Moore, and I live at 2112 Doral Drive. That is District 4, and I'm served by Fire Station Number 15. First of all, I'm here to support the change in the ordinance, the ordinances, number one, and also for the expansion of Fire Station 15, which I understand will be adding an aerial truck. It's the only aerial truck north of I-10, and I think if you're any familiar with aerial trucks, they have a greater capacity for pumping out water as well as support. So I think it's an excellent addition to this area and also support the new Station 17. Now, no one, of course, here wants an increase in their taxes or their any assessments, but I believe it's money well spent, and I think it's a public safety issue, and I would urge you to support it. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. The next speaker, Stanley Sims.
Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way, the award-winning small community that was awarded today. I'm here today because this fire service thing is very, very, very important to me. Number one, what's important to me is that I'm glad that we have some county commissioners that are standing for our watch, that are concerned. When you say, some people say, what's $5? $5 is a lot if you already owe somebody $20. That puts you in a hole. Unfortunately, everybody doesn't pay their utility bill right when it come out. There's been days in my life that I've had to ask for an extension. And the reason I mention that is because if I'm already challenged paying my utility bill, I don't need a fire service fee, which I think is a tax, added on to it. That's unfair to us. Again, I just want to applaud you all for looking out for our financial interest, but I'm also concerned that I think cooler heads needs to prevail. We cannot afford two divisions of fire service, one in the county, one in the city. That just does not make sense. And when you have two adults, award-winning, worldwide county administrator, I'm sure now pause, I have to pray, I'm sure you will find the words to speak to the city manager that we could find some agreement that we can move forward. Because the reason I say this, Mr. Long, when we start separating fire departments, next comes, we separate EMT. We separate animal services. You already have Caban up here saying only 20% of the residents are in our jail. I'm not with this separation. It reminds me of the negative word deregulation. We're stronger, we're smarter, and we are cheaper when we work together. It may not be easy to work together, but this is one time where talk has to meet the walk. We talk about how great our counterparters are and what all they do for us. This is the time to show us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Final two-speaker cards on this item are both joining us virtually. The first one, Paula Clark. Paula Clark.
Ms. Clark?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead. Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. So my information is privatized. Do I still need to give my address?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I am just speaking from somebody who's been a constituent for 20-something years in Tallahassee. I'm gone with the military. And one of my concerns about this is that taking it out of the utilities as a homeowner and somebody who I am now renting, that now lowers their utility bill but now increases my bill. And so the only way for me to be able to recoup that, and I just don't, me myself, but any landlord, would be to go up on my rent an additional $245. So that's a significant price. Granted, I understand the fee has not changed, but when I go to my tenant to say, I'm increasing your bill, you know, your rent $245 versus the $20 a month, I just don't know if there's a way that we can look at that, because I am sure I am not the only landlord in Tallahassee. So again, that's my biggest concern.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Sandra Paskins. Sandra Paskins.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Good to hear me.
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes. Ms. Paskins, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, please, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, I thought I was unmuted. Yes, my name is Sandy Paskins, and my husband and I live in Lake County, Florida. But like the prior speaker, we're landlords, and we own a small mobile home park at 5862 Foxfield Trace in Tallahassee, 32304. I appreciate the opportunity allowing me to explain why we feel that the shift to pay for these fire services from the monthly utility bill to an annual property tax bill will be detrimental to all citizens who have more than one residence on their property. Our small mobile home park has 18 homes, and currently each of those residents are paying their own utility bills, so they're paying the monthly $20 fire bill as part of their monthly electric bill. Since you're proposing adding $245 to our tax bill for each of those 18 mobile homes, you're going to be adding $4,417 to our tax bill. So for some context, we purchased the park back in 2021. That first year, our property taxes were $2,000. Last year, our tax bill was $4,078, so it more than doubled in four years. The proposed tax bill that we were mailed last month showed that next year our taxes are going to be $4,173. So it was going to be going up by about $100, which is a completely understandable and manageable increase. However, your proposed change for fire services is going to add an additional $4,417 to our tax bill. That means that our tax bill will increase from roughly $4,200 to just under $8,600. Yes, you heard that right. It's going from $4,200 to $86 because of this one proposal. The amount being levied for the fire services is more than all of the other services covered by my tax bill combined. This proposal will cause our tax bill to be more than doubled. Now, this enormous increase in our property taxes will be a hardship for us, and just like the prior speaker, it would be an impact for all other citizens who have more than one residence on their parcel, like all apartment complexes and all mobile home parks. We're trying to provide affordable housing to our mobile home park, but this additional expense compounded by the increase in property insurance is making it very difficult to just stay afloat. Being faced with an enormous tax increase like this will mean that we'll have to increase the rent that we charge our tenants, which is something we don't want to do, but we simply can't afford to have our taxes more than doubled. It's an increase that can't just simply be absorbed as a business expense. Therefore, we ask that you please reconsider your decision and not shift the payment of fire services to the property tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paskins. Any more speakers?
Mr. Chairman, this concludes our speakers. Staff is recommending Option 1 to conduct the public hearing and adopt the proposed ordinance, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're in the queue, followed by Commissioner Caban.
Thank you. Move staff Option 1.
All right, we've got a motion for staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Caban. Commissioner O'Keefe, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. The one thing, I want to thank Commissioner Caban.
Linda Hutchison. Sorry.
Sure.
It says on 31.
Yeah, I think she's already put her card in.
Did you want to speak on 30?
I wanted to speak on the one on fire, yes.
There's multiple ones on fire, ma'am.
Do you want 30 and 31?
One that's assessed on our taxes.
That's this one. You can go to the podium if you'd like, ma'am. Excuse me, Commissioner O'Keefe, thank you for your pause.
Speaker Linda Hutchinson.
Ms. Hutchinson, you have three minutes. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Linda Hutchison, 511 Easy.
Grab that mic. Thank you.
511 Easy Street, Tallahassee, Florida, 32303. I'm here to object to utilities, and this is a utility, call it what you may, being put on our tax bills. I've worked for 50 years. I'm an elder. There are a great many elders in our city and in our county. We all try to pay all of our bills. I have always paid my utilities. I don't mind it being a utility bill. I have a strong objection, and I'm sure that a lot of elders, when they read just about the last line here that says, "We can foreclose on your home if you don't pay this," that's strong wording, ladies and gentlemen. You're talking about a lot of elders. In my case, you're doubling my utility, you're doubling my tax bill. Now, I can pay it, but I prefer to pay it as a utility. I don't want my home jeopardized. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more speakers? All right, we're back to Commissioner O'Keefe. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you remind us the total amount per year that we're talking about?
Number properties?
No, the dollar amount for the fire service fee for a typical home.
Would be 200. Ken, let me defer to you on that. Is that what it is?
Zone 1 would be 245. Zone 2 would be 223, and most county residents are zone 2, the 223.
Gotcha. Okay. So I support this. The reason is, it simplifies, it's straightforward, and I understand the concern that the cost being moved onto the property tax bill. I will say, I'm a little jealous about $230 doubling property taxes. That is quite advantageous, but neither here nor there. I do want to make sure we're really clear that this does not increase any fees that are being paid, and this has nothing to do with the agreement between us and any other local government. What we're voting on today is one thing. For unincorporated citizens who pay a utility bill to the city, right now you pay roughly $20 a month on your utility bill. You will no longer pay that. You will pay $240 or $220 on your tax bill. It is not more, it is shifting. And for someone like me, that property tax goes into my mortgage escrow payment anyways, so it also is going there. So I just want to make clear that nothing is increasing, the source of collection is shifting. And I am extremely sensitive to having rental and affordable housing, and I appreciate the challenge this provides landlords. And I imagine if the rent is going up by the amount of what's being transferred, I want to buy exactly that amount, the utility bill's going down, and the rent's going up, equal amounts. Again, so we are not increasing, we are shifting the source, and so I support this simplification.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of comments about this I'll save for the next agenda item coming back from the status report and general business. Commissioners, I'm going to urge you guys to support this item. I think it's very important when you look at the other item that kind of lays out the history of the fire services assessment, along with a judge ruling that talks about how it is being imposed legally versus not legally. I think this is a necessary change. I think this will clean up a lot of issues in the unincorporated area, so I'm going to urge you all to support this item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Maddox, then Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, you did do some research on the case in Ocala, correct, that Commissioner Caban is speaking of?
That's correct.
Right. In your analysis, did you see that what we're doing right now to be something that we can't do?
So what I can tell you is that in the city of Ocala, they were charging a fee, which granted is legally different than an assessment, that is legally different, different tests. But in part, the court in Ocala determined that they did not legally impose a fee because one of the things is it has to be voluntary. That is one of the three requirements you have to meet for a fee. They collected the fire services fee on the utility bill, and what the court determined was that was not a choice. That was coercive, because they basically would cut off your utilities if you didn't pay your fire services fee. And so in that case, they determined that that was part of the reason that it constituted a legal tax.
What's the difference between what they did and what we're doing?
Nothing in terms of the county, because we collect on the tax roll.
Well, the city, I'm sorry.
And that is 100% legal.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't represent the city, so I can't opine about the legality of what they do.
Thank you, Ms. Madam Attorney. We talk about affordable housing up here all the time. We just heard a mobile park, which is probably one of the biggest spokes of affordable housing, say that they're going to, that their tax roll will double with what we're doing here. There's no way, as Commissioner O'Keefe said, that that's not going to be passed on to the renter, which will increase the rent for those who rent those mobile homes. Yeah, it may go up by the amount that, it may go up by the amount that we assess for fire services, but it could go up more. And for that reason, I like, I understand what we're doing, but I don't, as I said when we first talked about this, I don't think this plays out well for the renters in Leon County. And so, Madam Attorney, if we did not do this, is there any liability for us at the county?
Potential liability would, no, and here's why. So hypothetically speaking, if the city's method of collection is challenged and it's determined that that's impermissible, unlike some of our other agreements, we are required to collect and provide to the city what we bring in using the uniform method of collection. So really, the potential liability is to the city, because they would be responsible for making up the difference, not the county.
The amount is $245, correct, Mr. Administrator? It's paid monthly on the utility bill. Ma'am, I agree with you. If I could split that up into 12 months versus planning it all at one time on my tax bill and maybe have to worry about my lights being turned off versus my house being foreclosed, I'd probably go with keeping it on my utility bill. And so I'm going to take a shot in the dark. I know we're here now, but I'm going to take a shot in the dark and make a motion for Option 2, that we perform this public hearing but do not implement the change to the ordinance.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
So we've got a substitute motion.
Substitute motion for Option 2.
From Commissioner Maddox for Option 2. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Minor. We're now on the substitute motion.
And again, I'll go back to what I said earlier in that it's not the worst idea in the world. I understand where we're going with it, but we had a lady who just said that her tax bill will double, and as a result of that, that cost will be passed down to the renter on top of whatever increases year to year that will happen to the rent. So we're talking about $245 increase. Then there'll probably be some back from the time that we change it this year, and I'm just not willing to do that to renters who are trying to put themselves in position to be able to afford a home, to be able to save, to have a deposit, I mean, to have a deposit put out on a rental or to have a down payment put out on a home. I'm just not there yet. So if those renters are content right now, because I don't think anybody came and complained about it, with paying that on their utility bill, let's keep it that way, and make sure that we're not adding to the rent that they may pay every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I got Commissioner Cummings, then Commissioner O'Keefe and Caban again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've sort of, I've tried to do an analysis on this proposal, and I think when it was first initially raised, you know, we agreed to scrutinize it, scrutinize it when it came back. I certainly understand, I guess, the rationale behind it, but the double-edged sword is, if the fire services fee is designed to protect those users in the unincorporated area, and if we've got disproportionate number of those users that are renters and not homeowners, even rented homes or renting apartments, then as far as the direct tax, their utility bill will be reduced, and of course, the whole load will go to the owner of the property. And I personally would fall into that category, maybe not as harsh as some other, you know, property owners that don't actually live on the property. One of the things that I thought about in analyzing this is, and I know we've got hypotheticals about what could happen if you don't pay, what the city could do, what have you, but I'm not sure if we have any tangible examples of that ever happening. If a utility owner that's receiving services from the city refuses to pay that user fee for fire services, have we ever had an instance where their services were cut off, where the services were terminated? I don't know if we've ever had that instance, and I don't know if that was raised as rationale for this, but you know, I understand Commissioner Caban's concern when this came up a couple of months ago, but I think now, like I said, I think it's a sort of two-edged sword. If we don't have specific examples of some egregiousness, you know, on the part of the utility company, if it's not broken, then what are we trying to fix? Are we trying to reduce taxes for renters? Are we trying to insulate utility users from their services being cut off, which I don't think we have an example of that? So my point is, what is the benefit to the taxpayers? You know, maybe somebody can answer that. And I would like to think that what we do here on the dais is driven by our concern and our representation for the taxpayers. Arguably, renters do not pay adverbal taxes, but if they have active utility bills, I believe they pay the fire services user fee. Am I correct? I think in reading the analysis, I think that's the distinction. Everybody that has utility services in their name, in the unincorporated areas, pays the user fee for fire services, whether they own the property or renting the property. Am I correct, Madam Attorney? Can I ask that question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
That is true to the extent the city bills them on the utility bill. If the county bills them on the tax roll, then it's always the property owner who pays, regardless of whether there's a tenant or it's the property owner who lives there.
Okay, I guess I'm talking about status quo. Status quo right now, if we don't pass this ordinance, everybody, property owner or not, renter, what have you, if you have a utility bill in your name, that additional fire services user fee is on your bill.
If people are receiving utility bills in the unincorporated area, it's the person who receives the utility bill who pays for the fire services assessment, just like their utilities. That's correct.
Okay, awesome. Okay, you answered my question. So to the extent that if we pass this ordinance, it will, other than shifting the fee from the utility bill to your tax statement, other than that, it will have an adverse effect, a ripple effect, if the property owner decides to increase the rent of the renter to absorb the increase in adverbal, well, the increase on the adverbal tax bill that they will receive once a year. Many individuals, and I think the majority of us, have monthly incomes or every other week, a weekly income, and we try to schedule payments as they come in. To, I believe the majority of us, we would prefer perhaps monthly statements as opposed to one lump sum added to the bill of a year. And I think if we pass this particular ordinance, I think we can almost rest assured that the renters' fee, their monthly rental amount, is going to go up to absorb that increase on the on the part of, of the property owner. So I, I'm, I'm not convinced that this is the best option for the property owner or for the renters, uh, recognizing that many of the individuals in our unincorporated areas are not property owners, they're renters. So it could possibly have, uh, an adverse disproportionate effect on those individuals who can't afford homes, who are not homeowners, property owners, they're renters. So, you know, I listened to some of the other commissioners, but I'm just conflicted on this particular ordinance, Mr. Chair, about whether it's in the best interest of our unincorporated citizens in our unincorporated areas of the county.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Right now, we already have this policy for 15,000 properties in unincorporated Leon County who are not part of City of Tallahassee Utilities, that are all or mostly Talquin. So if this policy is not appropriate, then it's also not appropriate there. I just want to point that out. This would not be a brand new novel policy. It currently applies to every one of the 15,000 properties in unincorporated Leon County that aren't on city utilities. That includes landlords or renters. We've had, this policy change would impact 23,000 properties. It would add that to the people who are treated this way. And we have heard from two landlords who have said that they're concerned that this would increase their rent because it would shift the cost off of the renter's utility bill by roughly $20 a month and they would have to increase the rent. And it's been implied that they'd have to increase the rent more. What I will say is annual cost increases outside of this shift are not impacted by what we do today. The only impact today is shifting that $20 a month from the utility bill of the renter. In this case, which is, we've only heard from two landlords out of 23,000 properties, shifting it from utility bill to a tax bill that is paid by the owner and then theoretically as described, passed on to the rent. The concern was implied that the rent would go up more than the $20. Well, I'm here to point out to you, that's up to the landlord. If we're telling you the landlord's cost is, the renter's cost is going down 20 and the landlord's cost is going up 20, going up 20, if the landlord passes on 30, that's just them putting more money in their pocket. That is not a result of this commission. Ultimately, this is six of one, half a dozen of the other on how we collect it. This brings us into consistency for people on city utilities and unincorporated area, but that's as much argument as I have for it. I just don't want us to have two landlords talking about rent increases theoretically beyond what we're doing override the overall policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. And, um, Commissioner Caban and Commissioner Proctor's in the queue. Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, was not expecting to have to glean in on this item, truthfully. Um, so I, I thought that we had covered all, a lot of this conversation al- already. But Commissioner Cummings, if you may walk with me on this, you asked, what is the benefit to the taxpayer on this item? Madam Attorney, the fire services assessment, is it a benefit to the renter or the property owner?
Uh, our ordinances and resolutions say both.
Okay. What about in the, the discount asleep of Ocala LLC versus City of Ocala in their case law?
Well, the court there determined that it was not voluntary and therefore it was inappropriate for, uh, the City of Ocala to use the utility bill as the method of collection in that case.
Did the court determine economic coercion?
Uh, the court did use the phrase economic coercion because there was no choice. That is true.
The definition of economic coercion means illegal pressure or threat or lack of free Currently, we already have a, a method of collection for the unincorporated Leon County. Commissioner O'Keefe, I could not agree more with your sentiment there. The way this is currently being posed is not fair. We, we have already discussed this in previous meetings that some folks are paying and some are not. We discussed that on, on the record. There are some folks who received the fire services assessment, yet not contributing. What this does, this makes it fair and uniform across the entirety of the unincorporated From my reading of the discount seat of Ocala versus the City of Ocala, was that the court ruled it to be a, a benefit to the property owner. Madam Attorney, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this, um, I'm gonna pass this ordinance. Can you, I know Commissioner Maddox asked this already, but can you describe, what is the similarity currently on how the City of Tallahassee imposes the fire services assessment versus this lawsuit of which the taxpayers won, when challenged?
I think this is from the City of Tallahassee Code of Ordinances. Uh, yeah, this provision, section eight dash six seven A three provides that the city has the discretion to turn off people's utilities if they do not pay the fire services charge.
And as part of this lawsuit, was this not one of the bases that found it to be an unconstitutional tax?
Correct, because it did not meet the requirement to be a fee. That's correct.
Correct. So Commissioners, there's case law stating that this being imposed through the utility isn't, was considered an unconstitutional tax. I, I, this should be, in my opinion, a no brainer that we have another government, we have an ordinance that allows another government to impose an unconstitutional tax on our This, this, in my opinion, shouldn't be, should be a no brainer and quite frankly, we should have the authority to clean this up countywide because folks in city limits are also Leon County taxpayers. They're our constituents too. So I also agree with the sentiment from Commissioner O'Keefe where he said, yeah, like this is not, this is not in- increasing the cost to renters. This is shifting and right now, if you have a property, right, the tenant doesn't pay the insurance for the landlord, but that doesn't happen. Particularly what this says, this City of Tallahas- this is a City Tallahassee ordinance where it says, fail to pay such a fire services charge, shall subject the property to the discontinuance of other utility services and all other penalties and charges available under law relative to the discontinuance of such utility services. The administrative appeal and hearing procedure applicable to the discontinuance of other utility services in the city shall be applicable to be discontinued of such their services for any delinquencies resulting under this article. This means that they are considering the fire services assessment to be considered another form of utility. And there's case law right in front of us that the county attorney provided that said a court ruled the fire services fee cannot be considered another utility. This is the same thing and we're allowing the City of Tallahassee to charge this on our residents. This is an unconstitutional tax. It's wrong. We have case law here in front of us. This should be a no brainer. The way this is currently being imposed is not fair and it's not uniform. And so the benefit to the taxpayer is that this is an illegal tax. This should change. And also, which I'll talk about in the next item, the City of Tallahassee just voted in their last meeting to violate our internal agreement and veer away from the case study, which in itself is another form of an illegal tax, because now there's no basis for them to increase the rate on. So this, Commissioners, I, I've dug deeply into this and this needs to clean up. This, this, this policy is outdated. I don't know why we're allowing the City of Tallahassee to collect any monies from our unincorporated residents. Um, they don't represent unincorporated Leon County. And so I urge you to walk with me on this and, and pass this ordinance to clean this up. And I will say this, if the landlord chooses to increase rent because of the fire services assessment, that's their prerogative, no one is, no one is forcing them to do that. Um, I have a rental property myself and with all the inflation's gone up since I've owned the property, I have an increased rent 10%. So that's, that's a landlord decision and I think what's more wrong in this scenario is for a tenant to be paying the benefit that goes to the property owner. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Proctor, then I've got Commissioner Maddox, but if you don't mind.
Chairman, I want to ask, uh, the chairman, I want to ask permission for staff to, uh, put this policy that's been shared by Commissioner, um, Caban on, on overhead of public clarity and transparency. Uh, I wanted to ask how many fires, uh, have actually occurred in Leon County, in the county of Leon, um, not meaning in the unincorporated area of Leon County over the last, uh, five years?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner, I'd have to get you an update. The last number that I recall structural fires were somewhere around 400 a year, but I, I might have to update that number.
So you're saying we had 400, I'm not talking about the Appalachian forest, I'm talking about.
Structural fires.
Yeah.
Yes.
400.
That's the last number that I can recall. We may have to fact check that.
Okay. Um, Madam Attorney, uh, consistent with conversation lifted by Commissioner Caban, can we place a moratorium against rental, uh, increases, uh, based upon the fire service fee? So based upon what Commissioner O'Keefe said, that if $20 is what is being charged as new charges, that in the, uh, property owner goes up by $30, um, if we put a moratorium or that we disapprove of fees, uh, going up on bases to offset the increase in the fire services, um, then instead of a $30, it really ought to be a $10 if they choose to go up. Is that within our purview to do?
Uh, so I believe we, and I don't know how long ago it was, but in the past two to three years, sorry, time's a little fluid, but a question about whether we could impose some sort of, uh, restrictions on rent, uh, or rent moratorium came up, uh, and if I'm not mistaken, there's a statute that prohibits a local government from, uh, imposing rent constraints or moratoriums of any sort on private property. So the answer to that would be no.
Okay. Um, Commissioners, I, um, have, um, watched and had, uh, a sort of a silent, um, observational role in the issue, but Commissioner Caban has, um, put heart and soul in this matter and, uh, he keeps using this word, um, uh, which I'm very proud of him using this word, uh, the word fairness and sameness and uniform standard and which equates to, in my mind, equal protection of law. And to the extent that, uh, given his both passion, uh, this case that occurred in his hometown of Ocala, uh, his awareness and intimate awareness of what happened in that community and he see a similar footprint, um, evolving in our community, I'm gonna walk with him. He, he gave extended invitation that we walk with him, um, to make fair. I like that word. I, I, I don't think it's an anti DEI word yet and I know certain words are playing out and out of style, but fair is still a good American word. It was today, I think. And I want to walk with him because it's his reach, uh, for fairness, uh, across the board for everyone. And I'm not certain that, even though that's the goal and objective, but whether this is fair or not, um, I honestly don't know. Uh, but I'm gonna walk with the Commissioner, uh, because of how much energy, his passion, uh, his experience from Ocala, what he sees being patterned here, um, I'm gonna trust his judgment and go with that, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Um, before I go back to Commissioner Maddox, I'm gonna throw my two cents at it. Commissioners, I think, um, I think the difference between what we do, which is illustrated up there, and what happened in Ocala are pretty thin. I mean, it's essentially a semantic argument in terms of how that is collected and I feel like it, aside from the, the sort of rent gonna go up, all that stuff, I think it's a best practice that we have consistency in how we do this. I lived in the unincorporated part of the county and paid the fire services fee separately, separately entirely. It wasn't on my tax bill. You can still, I believe, opt that it be billed separately than your tax bill, but I mean, I think it's very important to emphasize what Commissioner O'Keefe said. I mean, this is a revenue neutral situation. If, if your monthly utility bill goes down $20, i- if, uh, i- if landlords wanna up the rent $20, the tenant is still held harmless. I mean, it's still the same. Um, so it's really just, we're talking about the me- method of collection here. And for us at the county, it's, I mean, aside from the issues of cutting your utilities off for not paying your fire services fee, I think for us at the county, that does expose us a little bit and we just need to be consistent across the board. So this is really not, it's not about like shirking the responsibility or shifting the responsibility. It's really just about method of collection and being uniform and consistent with how we collect this fee, which of course we just pass right on to the city anyway. It's not like, I, I think it's just better for us as a board of county commissioners to just be consistent with how we collect the fee. And I, I get that it says you can be foreclosed on if you don't pay the fee, but I think like Commissioner O'Keefe said, practically speaking, most people are escrowing their taxes anyway. So if you're ex- well, most people are, if you escrow your taxes, then yeah, your, your payment's gonna go up $20 a month, but you can easily just bill that right back to your tenant and be, everything can be revenue neutral. So nobody's fees are being adjusted here. It's just the method of collection. So with that being said, I, I'm not, I'm not really interested in supporting the substitute amendment. I would rather support the initial, uh, I'm sorry, substitute motion. I would rather support the initial motion. So that's where I'm at. Um, we are on a substitute motion, if I'm not mistaken though correctly. And Commissioner Minor, you have a second? And I know, I haven't, I don't think we've heard from you yet, Commissioner Minor, so let me know if you want to hop in there. Commissioner Maddox, back to you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, can I address Jelani Marks?
Who, what's that?
Jelani Marks. Can you give me an opportunity to ask Jelani some questions?
Sure, sure. Jelani, I'm sorry. I thought you said Delaney.
What was the request again, Commissioner?
He wants to talk to Jelani.
Omar, okay. Jelani is, um, does a lot with our housing, specifically our Affordable Housing Committee. He is the staff person that, uh, chair, uh, that chairs, the staff person for that committee in particular. Jelani, um, we've talked a lot about affordable housing, um, in that committee, of course. When it comes to affordable housing and you, I think we did some studies to assess the problem, do we have more of an affordable housing problem purchase wise or is it affordable rental problem based off of the research that, that was done by the county?
So we do currently have a priority for affordable rental units. We have a highest need for affordable rental units, but we also have seen a need for affordable homeownership as well.
Okay. So, so in your assessment, what you just said to me is that the highest need in Leon County is for affordable rentals? Yes?
According to the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies, yes.
Thank you. Um, that's all. Madam Attorney, as I heard you say when you were speaking to me that this ordinance, uh, or this, this, this method of collection that the city has, uh, would be a city liability problem and that any changes to it would need to be done by the city if they were challenged, correct? that any changes to it would need to be done by the city if they were challenged, correct?
Based on the way our local agreement is written, I believe that's correct.
Yes. So, I see the numbers here, and usually, I'm the type of guy, and once I see something like this, I'll, you know, let up off of it, maybe take a motion off the floor and say, you know, I'll just go with the original motion, but no. I'm on the Affordable Housing Committee. I'm the commissioner that fought for us to redevelop or revitalize Orange Avenue apartments to be Columbia Gardens. I'm the one fighting every day for us to make sure Springfield gets renovated, to be more looking like what we like for our communities to look like. So no, I'm not, I'm not backing up off of this one, I'll just have to fail on this one, but I want us to understand that we don't have an affordable housing problem, we have an affordable rental problem. And even if you say it's 20 bucks, and Madam Attorney, I know we can't do anything to limit how much rent is raised by a landlord, a landlord, but I think there are some stipulations there by law that says how much they can raise it. My point is, is that it's not a when, it's not an if, it's not an if they raise it, it's a when they raise it. They're not going to take this cost and just swallow it, it's going to be passed on. And right now, for a renter, they can pay, they can take that cost monthly. Well, landlords may do it that way, they may, I mean, but they may try to increase by more than that, who knows? I'm not, I'm not saying that, you said that, I inferred that they, that they will, they might, they might do it, they might not, but I think they will. And so, because I know, this is not something I guess, I know that we have an affordable rental problem, I'm not going to put, I'm not going to vote for something that's going to put more cost, potentially, on our renters, when right now, they're covering it on their utility bill. Again, if I am, the young lady spoke a minute ago, she said, like you said, I'd rather pay it on my utility bill than pay it on my, on my, on my property taxes, for a couple reasons. If I had to pick between cut off my lights or foreclosing my property, I'm, go ahead and cut the lights off, okay? But I don't think I've ever heard anybody come to me and say, yeah, I ain't going to pay that $20 that I owe on my utility bill because it's the fire services fee. Now, if you had the money to pay it, you had the money to pay it, but ain't nobody looking at the utility bill and saying, I'm $20 short, I'm not going to pay, I can pay all of it, but I'm just not going to pay that $20 for the, for the fire services fee. I understand the argument, I understand it, it makes a lot of sense, and if there was a way, that I knew that this wasn't going to be passed on to renters, I probably would go with it. But when we first had this conversation, we first had it, I said the same thing I'm saying now, I'm willing to go down this road, but I don't think, if I had a choice between paying $20 a month and on my utility bill versus it being on property taxes, I'm going to put it on my utility bill. If I'm a renter, go ahead and keep it on my utility bill, don't pass it on to the landlord who's going to pass it on to me in my, in my monthly rent, because I don't want my rent to raise. So, I'm going to, I'm going to stick with the motion that I have. Again, usually, I would probably take it back, or rescind my motion for the sake of us being able to move through this faster, but I, I truly believe, I truly believe that right now, what I'm doing is trying to really take a stand for those who we've identified don't have enough stock, which is the renters. Again, we are short on affordable renters, and what we're doing is going to increase the rent. Yeah, I hear, he's saying it's just a transfer, it's going from the utility bill to the rent, but still, it's increasing the rent. So I'm just, I'm just not in the fashion to want to do that. So I'm going to keep the motion on the floor, I know it's probably going to fail, but I'm going to keep it on the floor, and I appreciate you guys indulging me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I just want to, just for clarity, from my own understanding, and I know you, this is not increasing anyone's cost of living. This is not increasing anyone's cost of living. If it's on your rent, it's not on your utility bill. So, I think we're losing that a little bit, it's not increasing the cost of living at all for anybody.
It's shifting the cost from a renter to a property owner that's going to take it back to a renter in the way of rent.
That's, Commissioner Maddox, please, Commissioner Maddox, you're not recognized. I, I want to speak. It's, that's a neutral movement, nothing is increasing in that movement. It is totally neutral, no one's cost is going up in that scenario that you just outlined. Commissioner Cavan, then Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Minor.
Mr. Chair, I want to point one thing out, because I do care about affordability for renters, and Commissioner Proctor, right now, renters have no choice. What's happening now is renters are paying this, no matter what, through their utility bill. So, what's, by us moving the method of collection to its uniform, it's at least giving landlords a choice, but right now, there's no choice, renters are just paying it, right? And so for me, it's important to recognize, I actually agree with the sentiment from Commissioner Maddox, I think your approach is different. Right now, if you rent a property, you're paying the fire services assessment through your utility, and based on case law, I question whether or not that's a legal tax, a legal tax on our constituents. So what we're doing right now is we're shifting it so it's uniform. My next point to this is this, we have seen on agenda items through this board, that this is not being imposed fairly and uniformly across the county. It's my opinion, by cleaning this up, we will actually, once we get to a point where this is fair and uniform, in the future, we're not going to have to increase this rate as much, because we're going to be collecting more, because it's going to be fair and uniform. People who aren't paying are going to be paying. And so I think this is a necessary change. Commissioner Maddox, you know, I always respect your spirit, I think we're trying to get to the same place, it's a different approach. So, I hope, I hope this passes, I think this is a necessary change, and I will be voting against a substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Minor.
Ms. Marks, I wanted to ask, sir, what is the affordable housing number in Leon County now? If you could tell us.
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat the question? You said, what is the affordable housing?
When we use the word affordable housing, affordable housing, what, what does that number look like in Tallahassee when we say an affordable housing number to purchase a home?
So, generally, according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is a metric that we use, affordable housing is defined as a situation where a household doesn't have to pay more than 30% of its income for housing-related costs. That would include rent, mortgage, utilities, HOA fees, all of those things that roll into the housing package to maintain the home.
Excellent. But in our community, we have arrived at a number that we call an affordable house in that price, and I was pondering, is there a working number that groups that deal with housing look at as the affordable housing market?
I think when he asks, what's the threshold, what's the, what's the pricing threshold for affordable housing? 250,000?
How far does it go?
It's really, it's really relative to the income, I know that for the SHIP program, for which we get our funding, they have a maximum purchase price based on our geographical area, which is somewhere in the 400s, but I mean, we, we don't consider, generally, when we're dealing with our low-income clients who are getting down payment assistance, we, we work with homes that are well below that price.
Okay, I thank you very much. It's been bandied about here that the most pressing priority is affordable housing, I'm sorry, affordable rental housing versus affordable housing. And I beg to differ in that, and I know I'm looking only at one information we received to date, about Springfield, where the median household income is $27,722. And I tried to do the math on my understanding of the equation of how much $28,000 in house will buy you two and a half times the amount of money you earn, and anyway, I think that come up to...
Charles, where you calculate at?
Oh, okay, well, anyway, I believe it's under $100,000 of home, if that's the median income. Here in the city of Tallahassee, the median income is 59.7, so $60,000, $150,000 house. And then, we say that in Tallahassee, that the median house value is at $230,000. So, I just want for the record, let's be careful to say that there are more people standing in line can't afford an apartment than people who can qualify for a home. There's a strong, impressive, oppressive tide against those who wish for homeownership, and on the numbers of median income and suppressed incomes of our area. I, I just not comfortable with, you know, with just, you know, like, rental housing, no, it's, and if you look around Midway, its growth, if you look at Sopchapi, Walcoa County areas, Mr. Chairman, Tallahassee has built two counties, and we provided a housing base in two different counties surrounding us, because we are people not able to capture and afford a house, consistent with what Jelani has said. And what he has identified is that specifically 30% of having 30% of disposable income to pay for all the attendant features of mortgage and property insurance and da-da-da, we're in big, big trouble here. But I'm empathetic with Commissioner Maddox, and it really touches, grabs my heartstrings to feel him reaching for the renter, if you will, but, Commissioner, please note that people are struggling, those who qualify. And it looks like to those of us on the outside looking in, that they tighten, ride, and secure. There's a hell of a lot of people is on the verge and doing all they can to hold on to their American dream. So, that's where I'm at with regard to respecting both those who desire housing, independent mortgage, as well as renters. It's tough out here for everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor, you're the seconder of the motion, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listen, great discussion, there are strong arguments on both sides. I will say, though, I agree with what Commissioner Maddox has been saying, very eloquently, and I'm not going to repeat the points he made because he did it so well the first time, but according to the Schimberg study, as Mr. Marks said, we do, we do have an affordable housing issue here in Leon County, but even more so, we have an affordable renting issue here in Leon County. It's much greater in our county than in other like counties in Florida. Now, when I look at it from a practical standpoint, you know, being a renter, the thing that prevents me from moving into a new apartment is the high rent, and the first and last month's rent that are due as, as security deposits. That, those are cost barriers that prevent people that are living in poverty here in Leon County from, from going into a stable home. And I'm going to use Mr. Giddy's sheet that he gave us, the chart that shows poverty by zip code, and if these numbers are correct, and I have no reason to doubt they are, you know, 32304 has a 49.4% poverty rate, 32310, 28.9% poverty rate. These are people living in these zip codes that are struggling to find a decent home to rent. And so what Commissioner Maddox has brought up very well, I thought, was, was that's the cost barrier for someone getting into a home. Yes, I hear the arguments about the cost shifting from being, from, from rent to utilities, or, sorry, from utilities to rent. I get that argument, I understand that argument, but if I put myself back in my shoes as a very poor person now at college, or if I put myself in the shoes of families here that are living in poverty, that rent cost barrier is the first thing I encounter. And so I think Commissioner Maddox has done a good job by describing that practicality of the situation, and so I'm going to support the substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioners, we're on the substitute motion, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the substitute motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Minor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, believe that fails four to three. Okay, three, four, sorry. All right, we're on the original motion, which was made by Commissioner O'Keefe and seconded by Commissioner Cavan, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the original motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Okay, is that five-two, or five-two? Passes five-two. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now on item 31 under public hearing, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 31 is your first and only public hearing to approve the fire rescue assessment and fee resolution, approve the resolution adopting the fire rescue fee non-adverbal rule and the certification of the entire rule to the tax collector. This item is a requirement under Florida statutes to utilize the uniform method of collection for non-adverbal assessments. Based on your direction on the previous item, to change the method of collection for the fire services charged in the unincorporated area of the county, this item requests the Board to approve the proposed fire rescue assessment and fee rate resolution. As you know, Commissioners, at your August 12 special meeting, the Board voted not to increase the current assessment and fee rates for residents for FY '26. The proposed rate resolution only updates the method of collection and does not reflect an increase. Secondly, this item also requests the Board to conduct the first and only public hearing on the adoption of the entire fire assessment's role to include all non-governmental properties previously billed on city utilities or quarterly billing, and the certification of the entire assessment role to the tax collector. We're recommending options one and two. We do have a couple of speaker cards, Commissioners.
Okay.
First speaker, John Gibby.
Mr. Gibby.
(inaudible).
Name and address for the record, three minutes, sir.
Uh, John Gibby, that's Gibby, G-I-B-B-Y, 4887 Gum Road. Just for the record, did everybody get the letter I sent to you, or sent to the government this morning? Okay, good. And again, thank you for allowing me to speak. I take pride in my ability to read. Reading is something I don't think people do much anymore. But can you please help me understand this agenda item? I don't really know exactly what we're voting on tonight. I think I do, sort of. How is this decision going to affect my fire rescue fees and property tax bill? Well, I think bottom line, I'm going to be paying for the same good service that I already get. I'm a homeowner, but also don't, I don't, never really liked it on my tax bill, or, excuse me, I didn't, don't like the fire fee on my utility bill, but we need safety and we have to pay somebody, and whether we pay to the city through the bill, or through the county, or whatever, I mean, we need the service. Whether the fee is at the right level, that's, you all are the experts, and so we're going to assume you all have selected the right fee. I'm just wondering, the two landlords that brought up their concerns, I didn't consider that one, and I'm really surprised, there were only two that spoke against it. That may be because of how complicated this whole agenda item has been, and we see the news that one side picking on the other side, and you guys hollering at the city, and the city hollering at you, and then you all get together as a group at Blueprint 2000, and you build all these things, and then us taxpayers have to come back and pay to maintain, maintain them, and FDOT wants it done one way, and Brett says he can only do it another way, and so it is confusing. So, if you could just help clarify for everybody, and the other confusing things, you guys do motions, second motions, back and... do motions, second motions, back and forth, that, you know, the public's confused. You know, we're regular people. We don't have law degrees. We don't have some of the expertise that you all have. So I'm just asking if you could please just help clarify this for everybody. The government is a hungry machine. The government provides generally services for us. We don't want to live in caves, you know? We have things to improve our lives, and I appreciate the opportunity and thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Gibby. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next speaker. Final speaker on this item is Jason Moore.
My first comment is, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
That concludes your speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner O'Keefe, you're in the queue.
Uh, move staff option, uh, option one and two.
All right, we've got a motion and a second from Commissioner Caban. Mr. O'Keefe, still yours if you need it.
Um, to, um, Mr. Gibby, uh, to clarify, whatever I said is what makes sense and is right. I'm kidding. Um, this is, this is essentially the same thing as the last item and just executing it, um, is what we're voting on now. And it's where we send out the notices and separately, some new properties come out in the rolls and we send notices to them. So this doesn't change processes, this follows what we just voted on. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So statutorily, every time we impose an assessment on the tax bill, we have to send the first-class mail notice. So every time someone is billed for the first time, in this case, maybe they just built a house on their property, it had been vacant before, they're going to get a notice because we have to provide them with that due process, that we're going to put that on their tax bill. Also, there was that group of people that we just talked about who previously were billed by the city using a different method. We had to provide them with the first-class mail notice because they will be seeing the assessment for the first time on their tax bill. So we are following statutory requirements by doing, by sending out the mail notice and following this process. We also have to send a certificate to the Department of Revenue adopting the tax role so that they know what to bill for assessments on the bill. That's what this does. Uh, and the other thing this does is, again, consistent with the board's direction to amend the ordinance related to method of collection, it also updates our fire rescue resolution that the board has adopted to provide for now the only method of collection in the unincorporated area for non-governmental property is on the tax bill. That's what this agenda item does. It doesn't change the amount of the assessment being imposed in the unincorporated area. That's it.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. All right, Commissioner O'Keefe, uh, next up is Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I want to ask, um, how much additional money is twelve thousand, I'm sorry, twelve million one hundred thirty-nine thousand, which is what, uh, we're going to collect twenty twenty-six, uh, is this a seven hundred and about forty thousand dollar increase over last year's How much additional is this from last year? And, um, I still have a concern with, uh, what, where does our tax, uh, fee money go in the city? And, uh, from our experiences and observations, uh, the city gobbles every dollar, uh, of, uh, the amount that we receive goes to the general fund. And, uh, we can't follow this money that we're raising and just for the good of the scrivener's, uh, want it captured, that I'm not happy in not knowing, uh, that the city, um, absorbs this money to undergird, uh, their operations in general fund, which means that, to me, this is a tax. Uh, they call it fee. This is a tax, and this money, when they get it in their fire account, the fire account gets robbed and this piggy bank, uh, goes to pay for, we don't know. Uh, the other thing is that we are a collection agency here and we're not getting a collection agency's fee. And, I mean, this is disturbing, really. Um, this is a collection fee that we're paying Commissioners, and, um, I don't know why we are collecting twelve million dollars for the city, uh, but we're paying the city a hundred and forty-some thousand dollars to cut the grass. We can't even get a hundred thousand dollar worth of grass cutting, and we are collecting twelve million dollars off of all of the people in the county. This don't make sense to me. I'm just, went to family high school, Stanley, I, I just, you know, just don't, this ain't baby rattle thinking. And I believe that, um, Mr. Administrator, some of this don't make sense. Twelve million dollars that's going to the operating fund that we, us, and I appreciate Commissioner Caban's effort in our, to unify, uh, collection method, but we're not getting that one dime, not ten cent on the dollar, five cent on the dollar for collection rate. And I think that we should not, I wouldn't raise twelve million dollars for nobody for free, and that's damn what we doing. And I feel stupid. Um, I think that, uh, going forward, uh, whatever our MOU is about, uh, this MOU needs to be exercised and if we get a divorce, I understand we may be heading to divorce court downstairs from the city on the MOU, but, um, I need to understand, uh, can we receive, uh, Madam Attorney, uh, collection from the city? And if we can't get a yard cutting out the city, almost like in exchange for a haircut, for twelve million dollars, something is off. We always sending money down the street, and I don't know anything we get from down the street, because we pay for everything, uh, light, air conditioning, parking tickets, I mean, you name it, um, something is wrong. And this relationship, it is off, and the partnership, uh, all of that is not balanced when we doing all the giving, they doing all the taking, and I don't understand it. So, uh, and within the framework of the MOU, Madam Attorney, can the county, uh, demand, uh, some, uh, keepings on the monies that we take up? Shouldn't there be a remitting of that money?
No.
Based on what?
Based on the language of the interlocal agreement. All money that's collected, aside from the cost of collection, is remitted to the city, period.
So the city being the godfather, uh, you know, sort of like, uh, let me just express two more points, Mr. Chairman, this is like North Florida Fairground, no matter how many millions of dollars they collect, we get one, one dollar. No matter how much money we collect for the city, we, we on a dumb agreement that said they keep it all. We know where it's going to the operating account. Uh, it's kind of like, no matter how much money TMH makes, city gets one dollar. These one-dollar agreements, no matter what Capital City Country Club makes, one dollar. We, we being dollar played and not, this is not right. And if we go back into another stinking agreement with them, uh, we need to get paid, that's what I'm saying. I believe we deserve to get paid. You don't collect twelve million, twelve million and, uh, one hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars for nobody for free. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One amount of the twelve million dollars Commissioner Proctor was speaking of is a result of us moving, um, the assessment from utility bill to the, to the, to the tax role.
I'm sorry.
What, what, what's, what amount of that twelve million is a result of, of the, of the motion that just, that just passed before this item?
So we're still collecting the same amount of money, um, again, and it would, it's just a matter of how we collect it, so.
No, all I'm saying is, we weren't, okay, so that part that was on utility bill, we were collecting that?
Yes.
So it was coming to us and then we were sending over to the city?
And then we sent it to the city.
We, we budgeted the full twelve million.
So we don't collect it, yeah, right, we budgeted, yes, we.
Right, but the city was collecting it, correct?
Yes, yes.
Uh, we sent out letters to those households to let them know that.
Thousands of them, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I appreciate the effort that we put in to make sure that, uh, residents were, uh, protected by way of the contract that we signed with the city for the fire services, uh, fee that was put in place three years ago. Uh, and, um, the good work of our county attorney to see that that contract has to be honored, needs to be honored. I appreciate this board's effort to send over, uh, to, to approve the motion I made to send over compromise to the city to see if they would be willing to move with us on it, uh, and ultimately we ended up here. I cannot support options one and two, uh, but I cannot support it not because it's not a good thing, I think it's a great thing that we're, that we're all in the place that we are as far as no increase, and that's a, that's a good thing for our residents. Uh, I cannot support it because of the previous item, whereas we're putting, uh, we're going to send, we sent out letters to let those property owners know that we're going to be increasing, uh, that fee, uh, charging that fee to them, uh, in an amount of two hundred and forty-five dollars. For the young lady who spoke earlier who said she'd rather have her on her utility bill, I think there's a lot of, a lot of folks out there, uh, who carry her sentiment. And so for that reason, I'll be voting against the motion on the floor. But then, again, I, I appreciate the effort that this board has put in place to protect long-term, uh, the integrity of the contract that we sign with the city that says that we need to stay at the fee that we're at until that contract is over. And again, Madam Attorney, great job in, in finding the answer that allowed us to stay with what, what was written for us to honor three years ago. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. We, Commissioners, we've seen more discussion. We have a motion, I believe, from Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Caban, for staff recommendations, options one, two, and, was it one, two, and three? One and two, okay. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes six, one. Madam Attorney, uh, we're on item number thirty-two.
Mr. Chairman.
Ah, all right. All right, Commissioners, this is the first of two required public hearings on the Leon County budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The second and final public hearing will be Tuesday, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five at six P.M. If you wish to speak in person, please complete a speaker's card and turn it into the clerk. Citizens registered to speak in person or provide virtual comments will be asked to speak prior to the commission taking votes on the millage rates and budget. Now, the county administrator, Vince Long, will read the millage rate into the public record.
Again, uh, Commissioners, and for those watching, uh, this language is very prescriptive and, and every word has to be read very specifically according to Florida statutes, so bear with me. Uh, the purpose, uh, the proposed aggregate millage rate for Leon County, Florida, is nine point zero six four four mils, which is a three point four six percent over the aggregate rolled-back millage rate of eight point seven six one five mils. Advalorem revenues will increase due to an upturn in property values. This increase will be used to support sustaining a quality level of essential services countywide. Commissioners, you've been provided, you have provided the necessary guidance during the development of the tentative budget and all the direction, direction provided in the various agendas and workshops during the budget process has been incorporated into the FY two thousand twenty-six tentative budget. Commissioners, we are prepared to do a presentation. As you know, I always say that, uh, but again, we understand that the board's received lots of presentations, and as I mentioned, it's all been incorporated, all of your previous directions been incorporated into what is before you today. With that, Mr. Chairman, if the, if the county commission doesn't wish to receive another presentation, I'll hand it back to you.
Commissioners, all right, um, we've got a motion for option one at this time, uh, second from Commissioner O'Keefe. At this time, the individuals that are appearing in person and virtually will be recognized to speak.
There are no speakers on this item.
All right. Um, Florida statutes require the board to address the millage rate before addressing each budget. The board must vote on each millage rate and budget separately. I will now entertain the motions. We've got a motion, uh, for option one from Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Um, Commissioner Maddox, would you like to be recognized?
That's, that's on the line.
Oh, it's not on this item?
No, it's on item.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay. So we're on item one, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Proctor, you ready to pass?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, thank you, Ray. I wanted to, uh, uh, compliment this board. Tonight, as this comes in for landing, uh, it does not reflect the caliber of engagement our board has put into, and our staff has interacted with, uh, various, uh, constitutional officers to, uh, bring to us, uh, a measure that we're to prove tonight. I'm most pleased, and though it was narrow, uh, but sometimes in winning a football game, uh, no, all the times in winning a football game, you may not be the best team, you just need to be ahead with points when the clock, when the time runs out. And, um, I'm very pleased that this board endorses a five percent raise, uh, across the board for our, uh, employees, governmental units. And I think that it, um, it affixes our values of, uh, of, um, how we view the personal commitment, dedication, and sacrifices of all of our employees. It's my understanding that, and I'm, I'll be listening for the, for the county attorney to help inform us a little later about the relation that we have with the fairground. But I believe that, um, you know, unjust enrichment by any other name and us being tangled to old contracts by which millions of dollars is being made off of property which from another era and thought form, uh, we're losing out, we need to offset and look at and reconsider a new contract, uh, in looking at everybody that paying a dollar a year around here, them, them days is numbered. And I believe that, um, if we were the managers of the fairground, um, I imagine, I don't even know how much money to imagine is going to get turned over in October for the fair. I have no clue on what it takes to gun shows and car shows and boat shows, I don't know. But there's revenue loss which we are throwing away and turning our backs on, and it needs to be rethought. Uh, if Capital City, uh, uh, Country Club, so they're losing money paying a dollar a year, they need to own it. I just don't know how you lose, uh, money paying only a dollar a year for, for dirt. I mean, imagine if they had to pay twelve dollars a year, they probably filed chapter thirteen or something. Man, losing money off of one dollar lease, and it's the city's fault, you know? We, the strange things occurring. That lease with, uh, TMH, we need to pull up. But overall, for the effort, the sacrifices that we've, uh, come together, give and take, um, I'm well pleased and I can stand on this budget, and I intend to support it, and I'm making suggestions with respect to monies that are lost, we need to redefine the relation and the control of a very highly productive piece of dirt, uh, that Leon County Fairground that we ought to control. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. All right, Commissioners, we've got a motion and a second for option one, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Passes six to one. We are now, uh, I need to recognize Commissioner Maddox before we get to option two.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I make a, I make a motion for option two without the line item funding for CHSP homeless services categories. I am the CEO of Family Promise of the Big Ben, and we receive CHSP homeless services funding, and for that reason, I have to recuse myself from that specific piece of the budget, but I would like to make the motion for the rest.
All right, so we've got a motion for option two excluding the line item funding for CHSP homeless services, seconded by Commissioner Caban. We are in discussion. Commissioner Minor.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to go ahead and make the motion after this one passes for the exclusion that Commissioner Maddox made.
All right, so we've got the motion excluding the, uh, CHSP. All right, so we've got the motion excluding the, uh, CHSP homeless services category and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. We are now on, uh, the line item for CHSP homeless service category in the general fund budget. Commissioner Minor?
So moved. I'd like to move, uh, that item.
Okay.
For the exclusion that Commissioner Maddox had.
Okay, so we've got a motion for the line item for CHSP homeless services category, seconded by Commissioner Caban, recusing Commissioner Maddox. Uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously, six to zero, with Commissioner Maddox recused. We are now on, uh, option three, our staff recommendation.
Move side recommendation, option three.
All right, we have a motion and a second for staff recommendation, option three, seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. We are now on staff.
Move option four.
Option four. Option four is moved by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Minor, seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously, seven, zero. We're now on number five.
Option five.
Okay, uh, and this is, I will entertain a motion to direct staff to advertise in accordance with Florida statutes. The tentative millage rates and budgets for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, date, time, and place of the public hearing to adopt the final millage rates and budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion was made by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Cummings, seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you to the public. We are now on, uh, public hearing, item thirty-three, Mr. Administrator.
Move staff recommendation.
All right, we've got a, we've got a motion for staff recommendation on agenda item number thirty-three. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. We are on option, or item thirty-four.
Move that recommendation.
All right, we've got a motion for staff recommendation on public hearing, item number thirty-four, seconded by Commissioner Caban, I think, gotcha. Um, and seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes our public hearings, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Tenace.
I believe we are back on item number twenty-three, which is, uh, pulled from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number twenty-three seeks your approval of a three-year agreement with Choose Tallahassee for relocation, marketing, and lead generation. Uh, Commissioners, this is a total of, uh, $60,000 over three years. Uh, rec, our staff recommendation is option one. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. We have no speakers on this item. And this was pulled by Commissioner Caban.
Commissioner Caban, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, I'll move staff recommendation, option one.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for staff recommendation, option one. We are in discussion.
Commissioners, I pulled this item incidentally, so I'm, I'm good to vote it up whenever you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So we've got a motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Minor, did you want to?
Mr. Chairman, no comments. It's, uh, ready to vote.
Awesome, perfect. We are ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes the consent items pulled for discussion. Mr. Administrator, we are now on general business, the annual report.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt real quick? Um, if I may, um, ask you to use your discretion, this chair, to, um.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Seek item, uh, twenty-seven. I have a, a constituent here who would like to speak, and she has a young child. They've been waiting, I believe, since like four o'clock, so.
Yes, uh, Commissioners, are you okay if we modify the agenda? Do we need to vote on that, Madam Attorney, to move an item up to get it exercised? Okay, are you all okay with that?
Thank you all.
If you don't mind, we're going to take up item number twenty-seven so that we can help some folks who have been sitting around waiting on us. Uh, Mr. Administrator, could you take item twenty-seven?
Absolutely. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, the Commissioners, as requested by the board, this item provides a status report on traffic calming and our program policy related to the seventy-five percent voting threshold that we have in place. Uh, the agenda item also included an update on a petition, uh, for installation of traffic calming devices on Williams Landing Road. Uh, there is no, uh, immediate fiscal impact, uh, on this item. Uh, we're recommending some policy changes to not include, um, uh, sort of, uh, undeveloped parcels, uh, in our, uh, calculation of that seventy-five percent, uh, petition requirement. Uh, with that, we're recommending, uh, option, uh, one to accept the report and to update, uh, the traffic calming policy, and we do have one speaker on this item, uh, Vicki Bramblett? Is that right? All right, thank you.
Ms. Bramblett?
It's actually supposed to be my six-year-old speaking, but guess that's not happening.
Vicki in Courtney. Is that right?
Vicki in Courtney, yes.
Okay, got you. Ms. Bramblett, uh, name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Um, my address is exempt, but I am on Williams Landing Road. Um, we have a pretty, I'm sure you guys are familiar with Highway Twenty, Williams Landing. Most of all the roads have landings. Ours is almost a straight shot. There's no curve, no turn till we're there. We have, he's been to our home before, Christian, and has seen these cars fly down our road. It is very unsafe. Our elderly are afraid to walk. We have a majority of the properties out there that you cannot build a home on. People own them. You cannot build a home on it. It's a flood zone. There's no way. I don't feel that they should have any say in basically what happens on the road, as we can't find them, they're not cooperating, we have sent letters. I feel that the people who own their properties and live in their homes there or are renters should be the ones that have say on what happens on our road, the people that are actually there. Um, I think we have a majority of the signatures that we need, but the policy does need to change, and we have several children in our neighborhood who are afraid to go out and walk. My husband was walking the other day, and a car actually came over and almost hit him with their rear side mirror, pulling their boat. I think they're afraid the fish are going to leave before they get to the lake. Um, so we're asking to please pass this and help us get these calming humps on these roads to protect our elderly and our children. That's all I ask.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. Um, Commissioner Caban, you were in the queue. Did you want to? Sorry, I took you out.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so I'm going to make an, um, this is going to go with option, uh, three, because there's a slight modification based on my briefing with the county administrator. I think staff's cool with this. Um, so I would like to move options one and two to accept the report, amend the policy, but, um, I also would like to include a third part to it that will direct staff to work with the Williams Landing, um, there's not, they're not H.O.A., so Williams Landing Neighbors, to bring back an item for us to review to implement traffic calming.
All right, we've got a motion, amended motion, or a board direction motion, um, and a second. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're in the queue.
Um, I believe this was brought to our attention by Commissioner Caban, and I just want to thank you for that, um, because this, getting traffic calming devices is something we hear about a lot in District Five as well, and this is often exactly that same hurdle. And so, um, it's a good time to update these things to make sure they work for everyone, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, we've got a motion and a second. I see no further discussion. Do you, good, Madam Attorney, okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. We're on to, uh, back to item number twenty-four, the annual report.
Thank you, Commissioners. This item, uh, Commissioners, exceeds your acceptance of the two thousand twenty-five annual report. Commissioners, if there's one thing this board agrees on unanimously every year, it's that this is the item that you, uh, wait for all year long. Uh, in the interest of brevity, uh, Commissioners, I'm going to make my, my, uh, my presentation brief, but I promise you, you're going to want to hang in here, uh, for the end. Um, again, Commissioners, as you know, I present this, uh, each time this year, uh, each time, uh, each, every year at this time of the year in, uh, uh, as required by Florida statutes. And as I say every year, Commissioners, all right, uh, this is my, uh, very favorite state mandate, uh, that I present, uh, on behalf of, uh, all the men and women of Leon County government. Uh, before you, Commissioners, are copies of the two thousand twenty-five annual report, and it is very comprehensive. Um, it represents, uh, another year of Leon County continuing to strive to set the standard in public service. And Commissioners, as you all know, uh, we did so this year, uh, as we continued to navigate economic uncertainty, uh, fiscal constraints, and no shortage of very, very tough issues, all while staying focused on board priorities like affordable housing, protecting our precious natural environment, ensuring the provision of high-quality essential services every day, keeping property taxes as low as possible, and most importantly, Commissioners, while pursuing, uh, very ambitious goals for our community. Um, Commissioners, as we do each year, we've presented, uh, we've prepared a short video to share with as many of our citizens as possible, uh, and that's very important, Commissioners, because, uh, all the things that you see highlighted in this annual report and in this video, uh, would not have been possible without the active involvement and input and support of our citizens. And of course, Commissioners, without the, the leadership and, and, and consistent, uh, support of this board. Uh, Commissioners, the eighty-four-page annual report before you provides all the stats and details that you would expect that demonstrate the performance of this organization and all we do, but I think you'll agree that the video really captures the unique way that only, uh, Leon County does it. So with that, Matt, Commissioner Caban is going to really miss out, and I promise you, uh, that's true. So with that, uh, Kiana, Matt, if you'd please cue the video.
Two thousand twenty-five was another year of great progress for Leon County and our entire community. Delivering on the board of county commissioners' highest priorities, we invested in infrastructure, created places for people to thrive, and advanced innovation through co-creation, and we did it with a clear focus on performance, fiscal stewardship, and the provision of high-quality essential services our citizens rely on every day. This year's annual report underscores how our employees continue to set the highest standard in public service across EMS, public works, parks, libraries, emergency management, and a whole lot more. That commitment is reflected in all we do. It is built into our infrastructure, safer roads, enhanced stormwater, and extensive water quality projects to accommodate quality growth and serve our community for generations to come. In two thousand twenty-five, we stayed focused on protecting and improving water quality in the South Side, leveraging more than $60 million for septic-to-sewer projects, removing more than 700 septic tanks, and investing $1.6 million to revitalize the Lake Munson Slough embankment. At the same time, countywide, we managed and maintained more than 600 miles of roads and nearly 700 miles of stormwater ditches to keep people and neighborhoods safe. From pipes and pavement to parks and public spaces, we raised the bar with more than 100 new acres of green space, adding to the county's 3,400 acres of parks and nearly 50 miles of trails. We transformed the historic Old Concord School into the nearly 8,000-square-foot state-of-the-art Mikasuki Community Center, celebrated another segment of the St. Mark's Headwaters Greenway, opened the county's largest dog park at Appalachia Regional Park, launched the Fort Braden Family Resource Center with the Children's Services Council of Leon County, and delivered eighteen street lighting projects, fifteen bus stop lighting upgrades, and added nearly 20 miles of new greenways, trails, and bike lanes in two thousand twenty-five alone. Our ongoing efforts to make our community more vibrant and resilient included expanding affordable housing, the bedrock for economic stability, health, and opportunity for everyone. The county increased annual gap financing to $500,000 and paired $5.8 million in direct funding with $183 million in bond financing, helping deliver more than 1,200 affordable rental homes with many more on the way. And we did all of this while advancing the county's commitment to serving our veterans, helping Leon County veterans and their families secure more than $40 million in earned benefits in two thousand twenty-five. Because building community is also about building connections, the county engaged thousands of our citizens across hundreds of events as we revitalized a neighborhood during our 9/11 Day of Service, celebrated the 10th year of the county's transformative Leon Works Expo, and hosted our award-winning Created Equal event, using music as a living chronicle of race, resistance, and celebration. Together, efforts like these make Leon County a premier destination, drawing more than 2.4 million visitors and generating over $1.3 billion in economic impact. The county also delivered our most successful concert lineup yet, welcomed more than 25,000 to the amphitheater, and supported nearly 300 community events, all during a bicentennial year that brought our community together. That momentum sets the stage for 2026, when Leon County welcomes the world to Appalachia Regional Park for the Forty-S sixth World Athletics Cross-Country Championships, the events first returned to the United States in more than 30 years. We expect 550 elite athletes from 60 countries, 10,000 spectators, an estimated $4.3 million in economic impact, all broadcast around the world. Behind these achievements is a high-performing team committed to efficiency and results, guided by a strategic plan with a clear vision, bold goals, and measurable targets. This year, county employees earned dozens of state and national awards, and we did it while holding the millage rate flat for the 14th consecutive year, maintaining one of the lowest budgets and one of the lowest employee-to-resident ratios among peer counties, even with more property off the tax rolls than nearly any county, underscoring our effectiveness and fiscal stewardship. And with this momentum, we'll keep setting the standard in the year ahead, listening to the people we serve, addressing our biggest challenges together, and making Leon County a place like nowhere else. Please learn more about this and so much more in the two thousand twenty-five annual
Commissioners, yeah, there we go. I'm, I'm, I don't know how I'm out of breath watching it, Commissioners, but, uh, I, as you know, again, it just scratches the surface, but they do a great year, a great job each year. Again, um, scratching the surface of all we've done this year and all we've accomplished together on behalf of and alongside our citizens. And again, the video that you just saw represents the coordination of dozens of county departments and divisions with hundreds of hard-working Leon County employees engaging thousands of citizens. Um, again, as highlighted today and, uh, throughout the annual report and in the video, it's been another very productive year for Leon County, and I know one that we can all be proud of. Uh, Commissioners, I want to thank you again, uh, for your leadership, and, and I mean this when I say it, and this is the one part I say every year and it doesn't change. I want to thank you for believing in this organization and for believing in, uh, Leon County employees. It's absolutely essential to everything that we do. Uh, Commissioners, I want to, again, just commend the dedication of our, of our team at Leon County, uh, for living, uh, our culture here, living our people-focused, performance-driven culture. They're simply the best in the business. Special thanks to our chairman this year for all of his, uh, support and accessibility, um, as well as my partner here, the county attorney, for all she does, uh, in, in guiding us. And finally, Commissioners, we're going to share this, uh, annual report in the video far and wide. Um, and before you know it, we'll be back at our retreat where we'll, where we, as you know, Commissioners, we take a very deep dive, uh, and we'll be getting updates on more than 102 strategic initiatives, uh, at that time. But for now, that concludes my report. Commissioners, happy to answer any questions, and yes, I recommend option one.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Chastity. Um, you guys do a phenomenal job, goes without saying. Uh, Commissioner Maddox?
Move option one?
All right, we've got a, uh, motion for staff recommendation, option one, and a second from Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Maddox, you want to?
Thank you. Um, Vince, you said there was going to be something good at the end there. I don't, I don't think there's any better compliment that a local government or any government can get than the, than to be quoted, than to have a citizen quoted being said, "We feel heard."
Amen.
"We feel heard." And that, I think, is a testament to this board and the way we do listen to our constituents when they come forward with ideas and they come forward with, with things they like to see us do. Uh, and so to this board, I, I think we can all give ourselves a pat on the back there to say that we have constituents who feel like, uh, we hear them, and that, that's the biggest compliment we can get as elected, as electeds, uh, as we were bought here to hear them, uh, and try to implement the, the things that we hear from our citizens, but also, while also understanding that we have a job to do that sometimes, uh, may put us at the opposite end of what we may hear, but consistently, on most times, if we can make something happen for our constituents, we've done that. And so, uh, to this board, thank you, uh, for being the board that we have been, the collegiality that we operate with, uh, the professionalism that we operate with, uh, and the way we, we do receive our constituents. To our staff and our county administrator, uh, though we may hear our constituents, uh, you are the ones that put what we hear into action. And so, to you all, this, this annual report and that video is a testament to how well, uh, that, that, that train goes from our constituents to the board, to our, to our great administrator, to our staff, to make sure that everything that we hear is being to make sure that everything that we hear is being implemented throughout the county and that it's being implemented in the best way possible. And so we're nothing without each one of you on our staff, and I think that's a testament to the 5% that you're getting this year as an increase. It's because we understand that you are the ones who do the hard work, you're the ones who make us look good, we just simply hear and give direction. So, Mr. Administrator, staff, thank you. To this board, again, thank you. Mr. Chairman, great year this year. That's a good reflection of what you led us through this year. Being chairman one time, you never forget your first time, first of all, but secondly, you've had a heck of a first time. And so I appreciate the way you led us this year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. That really means a lot to me, sincerely. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question for staff. This upcoming retreat, this will be the end of the five-year, is that how it works, like a five-year plan? And then we have new?
One more before the end. This will be our final year of the five-year, yeah, final year of the five-year plan.
So it's going to be the final year. So when do we come up with the new strategic?
The year after that.
Year after this, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, I've gotten used to seeing some of these books, and I've seen a few before.
You had all 29 of them?
But I intend to see some more. But it's always very endearing to note and understand the amount of energy that's been poured into the success which is captured, chronicled, and cataloged and presented to us. First wanted to say the most important thing to me is that I really appreciate staff finding an excellent picture of me on page. If you've not seen it, go to page 82 for starters. And I don't know why y'all putting me in the back of the book, you know?
Also, see page one.
But here I am in the back of the book. I appreciate the photo op, but this really is truly remarkable journey of a year, this yearbook. And I appreciate seeing our staff faces, Leadership Directory, their placement here, their phone numbers, email, I mean, you know, really opening the door for public access. And I want for you to, commissioners, to note that while there are 67 counties in Florida, I wouldn't want to serve on another county commission other than this one, actually. There are those who earn more, much more than we do, but I just wouldn't want to serve on another one but this one. So Vince, we thank you for the excellence which you've continued to lead the organization forward. And I want to thank you too for something that's not seen in the book. We've not had any investigation.
Amen.
The FBI hadn't called none of us. We ain't lost a million dollars. We ain't changed no agreements in the middle of the agreement and tried to change up and go up on stuff. We have not served and been led in that manner, and I'm appreciative because I don't like, Stanley, you know I don't like mess. You know I don't like mess. I mean, except for when I do, but I usually don't like mess. And thank you, Vince, for keeping us out of mess. And I don't know what category that go in. Mr. Chairman, I had, I saw something else. I took note real quickly. Oh, dee, 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 dee. I didn't hold that page. But thank you all for a great year, commissioners. And I know we start on a new year, October 1st. And Vince, I just, oh yeah, this is what I wanted. On the legislative report, as we look to 26, I think that surviving the last year of this administration is critical that we hang on. And I think that with our legislative team, it's very important that we dig in and we're competitive across that street. And I realize the shuffle that we did, you know, in midstream last year, we got a new offensive coordinator, but we have a new offensive coordinator. And Vince, if there's a recommendation out of this report, all of this excellence, but if there's one thing I think that could lift us, raise the bar, and keep us moving with 5% pay raises, is that across the street, how we cultivate that field and harvest from across that street, we need more resources. And I think that the energies for next year, we should put that energy to secure more state support and federal support. Those things, congratulations. We thank you for your excellence.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Moner, followed by Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In a former life, I used to develop public policy for state and local governments, and so I got a good sense of our clients. You know, we'd work for a state government here, a local government there for three months, six months, whatever, and we'd learn about that local government or that state government. And so I have, I think I have a pretty good idea of the condition of many of state and local governments out there. And I can tell you that Leon County is the best that I've seen, based on my experience. This is a well-run county government, and for the folks that, the citizens that are here today and watching on TV, you know, we hear from you. We hear from you on how you think our Leon County government is doing. In fact, if you go to the annual report, page nine, you've got quotations from citizens that have been complimenting different functions of our Leon County government. And so we, this, what you see on page nine, these quotes from people thanking these departments for the work that they do is very similar to what my chief of staff and I see almost every day. We hear how great Public Works is doing, how great EMS, library services, CMR, veteran services. We hear this all the time. And sometimes when we can, we send that off to Vince or to the department head and share that. But I just want to tell you to our staff how good a job you're doing and how much that is appreciated by the people who live here. So thank you for everything that you do. Hopefully, you get some of that feedback yourself, but I can tell you, as a county commissioner standing up here, we hear it all the time. So thank you for everything you all do. It makes a difference, and it matters to the people who live here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moner. Mr. O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Vince, I have one suggestion. I think you might want to move this item to the same meeting during your performance review each year. Just saying, I would do it if I were the best county administrator in the world. I want to add on the thank yous. You know, we, our administration, our staff, our leadership, Public Works, EMS, we always name Public Works and not the other departments because they invite us to Thanksgiving Christmas dinner. Hint, hint. But you had a lot thrown at you this year by nature, by the state, by federal, by all kinds of things, and by us. We have really debated on this dais a lot of new things, a lot of different things, a lot of bold ideas that we haven't done before. And that passes on to Vince and Chastity and on down to the team to execute what is not easy things to execute. And so that, to me, is a testament to the group on this dais that can wrestle with those things and grow and stretch together. And then we know that the team is going to carry it out in a way usually better than we imagined. I just want to say I know how much we've thrown at you and how well you're doing with it, and I hope, like the citizens said, that they feel heard. I hope that you and all our staff feel seen, and it does not go unnoticed how much work you put into everything, and I just appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly echo the sentiment of my fellow commissioners. Mr. County Administrator, this is an awesome report, but not only is this awesome, you capture the employees of the county, your administration, the staff. I don't think anybody should feel slighted or left out if they look at this annual report. But not only that, it's captured in this booklet, but we see it on a daily basis, and I think we echo it at every meeting. And I certainly demonstrate my appreciation and my sentiment that you and your staff do an awesome job, because every year so far that I've been on this dais, I've always supported a raise for the employees at the highest amount that we can attain within the limits of a balance budget. So I try to put money where my mouth is, but just want you and staff to know that you go over, above, over, beyond, all the time. And I'm not just saying that. Individuals in the community echo that as well, and it's echoed on the state level, on the national level, with all the awards, the various departments receive throughout the year. I believe over 100 awards in some areas, but it goes without saying that you guys are top-notch, you're efficient, professional, you're competent, and as I've said before, our county administrator has the knack of choosing good employees that make him look good, make us all look good. We've got the best county attorney on planet Earth. She does a great job in giving us the state of the law. She doesn't sugarcoat it. She doesn't try to skew our opinion one way or the other, but she gives it to us, and then we in turn interpret it and try to make the best decisions that we can for the citizens that we represent. So, Mr. Chair, in a nutshell, I think we've got the greatest county staff on planet Earth, and I certainly appreciate my fellow colleagues up here as well, because I think even though it might take us a long time to arrive at decisions on very, very complex and important issues, I believe we all have the heart to do what's best for the citizens, what's best for the county employees, staff, and I just, I really appreciate it. So thank you so much, Mr. County Administrator. You just went over the top this year. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. And I'll just round out the comments by saying, you know, once again, what I've said every year, I feel totally out of place here at the county of Leon. You guys are all such, just such a great organization, right? And I feel like I'm here only temporarily, and I could not be more humbled and proud to be a part of an organization that really, it probably runs in spite of me sometimes, not because of me most of the time. So to all of our staff, all the way up and down the organizational chart, thank you. It is, and to my colleagues, I also want to tell you how much I appreciate you entrusting me with this opportunity this year, and I could not have more respect for each of you individually, and it is an utter privilege of my lifetime to be able to serve with you in this capacity and to serve in this organization. Really, I don't even know how much work I'm doing here in this organization. There, y'all are doing the work, and we are just out here trying to get by, and we just, this is probably not very eloquent, but I just want to say thank you. You guys are great. I'm going to keep this as an heirloom, okay, of maybe someday my kid will look at it, my kids will look at it and be like, "Oh, man, look at your pictures and this really fancy book about really awesome, from a really awesome organization." And I'll be like, "Yeah, I didn't have a whole lot to do with that, but, you know, I was lucky for a time." So I think all of us are really lucky for the time that we get to serve in this organization. So thank you all so much, and we appreciate staff. And I know a lot of y'all are sitting over there, and we just, and please relay back to your staffs, it is our privilege to work with you. Thank you. All right. Mr. Administrator, I think that wraps up the annual report. Do we get, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, wholeheartedly, passes unanimously. Who was my, my, okay, motion was Commissioner Maddox, second was Commissioner Caban. We are now on item 25.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to hand item number 25 off to our county attorney.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So the board had previously requested a status report on the City of Ocala Fire Services Fee Lawsuit Case. Talked about that a little bit earlier during the public hearing time. In summary, the court there found that the City of Ocala had imposed an illegal tax instead of a permissible fee for fire services. But I'm happy to go into any detail or additional information that the board may desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioners, any questions, discussion on item 25? I think we kind of got into it a little bit. Okay, perfect. We've got a, we got a motion for staff recommendation from Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Caban, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. I have a couple of questions related to this, the lawsuit with the City of Ocala and discount sleep. I know we touched on this briefly before, but what similarities are there currently being implemented on how the City of Tallahassee collects this fee versus this lawsuit that designated it as an illegal tax?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
So the third requirement to impose a legal fee, not assessment, but legal fee, is that a fee is voluntary. The City of Ocala used the method of collection on the utility bill. City of Ocala also could turn off your utilities if you didn't pay the fire services fee on your utility bill, and ultimately, the court just did not buy their arguments that you could move if you didn't want to pay it and that sort of thing. Ultimately, because of that method of collection determined in part that what was being imposed was an illegal tax, not a legal valid fee.
And, thank you for that. And can we, can we talk about the importance of the rate study and how that builds in a legal building block to be able to oppose this assessment?
I am so sorry. Could you?
Yes, ma'am. Can you talk about how the rate study that the county and city had done? And talk about the importance of that, how that is the fundamental of us guiding the fee?
So tell me if this isn't what you're looking for, but we impose an assessment, and the test to impose a legally valid assessment is twofold. An assessment has to benefit real property, which courts have said a fire service does in fact benefit real property. And the amount of the assessment levied has to be a fair and reasonable apportionment for the benefit received by different property. So again, what we do under our fire rate study is we have a consultant who basically looks at all the categories of different property in the different zones based on proximity to fire stations. They take out all of the costs that you cannot assess, like EMS, fire response to crashes and things like that, because those don't benefit real property, and that is what they use to develop and calculate for fire services as a special assessment here. Does that answer your question?
Yes. So right now, we currently have an inter-local agreement with the City of Tallahassee. We do EMS, they do fire, basically in a nutshell.
Yes.
And that was a five-year agreement.
For this term, yes.
And in the agreement, it says that neither party can raise the rate without it being agreed upon by both bodies.
For, yes, for a mid-cycle increase, for any increase, there has to be agreement by both parties. That's correct.
And so if the City of Tallahassee raises their fee or assessment and city limits, that would be a violation of our limits, that would be a violation of our interlocal agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And commissioners, last meeting, the city of Tallahassee voted to raise the rate, increase the rate 10%. And so, this puts, you know, in my position, I feel like this puts us in a little bit of a predicament. And the reason I say that, because we have, we currently have a five-year agreement, and the city has basically said they're going to violate our five-year agreement and raise the rate anyways, even though we voted no. But I say that, why it puts us in a predicament, because what, if we just sit here and turn a blind eye to that, what precedent does that set for any agreement that we have with any vendor or any other interlocal agreement that we have with the city of Tallahassee, such as Blueprint, or any other interlocal agreement that we have, even this landscape agreement that we have? And so, you know, I liked the sentiment of there seems to be a willingness to try to work some things out based on the conversations we had in Blueprint. However, we currently have a five-year agreement with the city. And I truly feel like it makes us look weak to other vendors and anyone else that we have an agreement with, that we're not going to hold true, or we're going to allow other parties to violate agreements with Leon County taxpayers, which is essentially what this is. And so, I find that troubling, and I don't feel like that's the best interest for Leon County taxpayers. So, Mr. Chair, I have a substitute motion that I would like to offer. Well, with a backtrack on that, before I get to there, I want to ask the county attorney a question. What are our options, Madam Attorney? If the city, which, you know, they voted last meeting to increase the rate 10%, as a board, what are our options to really discuss when it comes to this?
If the city reaches interlocal agreement, it would trigger the dispute resolution provision in the interlocal agreement. Ultimately, an arbitration panel has the authority to issue a temporary injunction. And then ultimately, we would go to court to seek a permanent injunction.
So, if the city imposes the rate increase, and then we seek an injunction, or, you know, we get, we seek an injunction and we win, what, what is the result of that if the city already increased the rate?
Well, I mean, the relief we would request is that, in part, they would potentially have to pay back the money that was collected above and beyond what was permissible under the interlocal agreement and the currently existing valid rate study. I can also confirm for you, because we asked the question of Accenture, whether they had developed a rate study for the city as they proposed to do in fiscal year 2026, and Accenture said they have not.
So, what you're saying is the city is raising the rate 10%, which is veering away from the rate study. They have not, Accenture did not do a rate study for the 10%?
No, by Accenture, they didn't.
Okay. So, commissioners, I just want to point that out. It's very, that's a very important point, because based on the Ocala lawsuit, part of what makes the assessment a legal tax is that it has to be backed by a rate study. So, if a board or a government, am I, am I correct? If we, if a board chooses to rate a rate, increase a rate, that's not backed by a rate study, it's, it's, based on what I'm seeing, is an illegal tax.
So, this isn't, this isn't where the city of Ocala case is relevant to this, to this issue. Basically, what you're looking at is to impose a valid special assessment, again, it has to, the real property has to be benefited, and it has to be assessed in an amount commensurate with the, I guess, the proportional benefit that the real property receives in a fair and reasonable manner. So, the issue here is the assessment methodology that was previously created encompassed, again, property in the incorporated and the unincorporated area. Zones one, zone two, all those categories of property. So, basically, going forward, people in the incorporated area would be paying more, even though they have, they may be in the same zone and have the same property category as somebody in the unincorporated area. So, you have, you basically violated your fair and reasonable apportionment requirement under assessment law. But that's not like the Ocala case. This, this is different.
So, to be clear, you're saying if the city of Tallahassee increases the rate 10% without a rate study, then it's, they are basically, they have, there's no fundamental ground to say that this is a fair and reasonable assessment?
Not based on the current methodology that was approved and incorporated into our interlocal agreement. That is correct.
Okay. Commissioners, this is a problem. This is, this is a problem. This is a clear violation of our interlocal agreement. And listen, we represent the city of Tallahassee residents. Every single city of Tallahassee resident is a Leon County resident. And so, I'm going to, I'm going to make, for that, listen, I liked the sentiment by a couple commissioners in the, in our blueprint board. It sounds like there might be some consensus to really have some real discussions of what this looks like in the future. And so, I'm kind of torn about the right method forward. I feel like we need to stand firm about, when we have an agreement with another party, that we expect them to hold their end of the agreement. However, I also am recognizing that having a good relationship with our neighbors across the street is important. And so, I'm going to make a substitute motion that I think will benefit the short term and the long term, and I think residents across Leon County too. And so, Mr. Chair, my substitute motion is for, to give the county attorney authority to implement or start the dispute resolution process, possibly to seeking an injunction if needed, while also giving the county administrator authority, if the rate is held, if the rate is held in this fiscal year, to negotiate with the city of Tallahassee, looking at creating a new five-year agreement to discuss what this, the fire services assessment looks like in the future.
All right. Madam Attorney, you got that?
I do.
Okay. Commissioners, we've got a substitute motion from Commissioner Caban. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've got a second from Commissioner Proctor. We are in discussion. Commissioner Maddox is first, then Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner O'Keefe.
So, the motion on the floor is to start arbitration process?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The motion I have right now is to start the dispute resolution process, which could get to, from my understanding, an arbitration. And then meanwhile, give the county administrator authority to go, you know, meet with the representation from the city and talk about what this looks like in the future. As far as, clearly, there's some things that they don't like in our agreement, there's things that we don't like in our agreement. I think the best route forward is to say, hey, we're not raising the rate this year. Give Vince the authority to go meet with staff and come back with a new proposal for us to review to move, to move this item forward.
I think the county administrator has a question for you, Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Commissioner Caban. Yeah, just, just one clarification question that would be helpful to us. So, got the first part. On the part about authorizing the county administrator to negotiate a new five-year term, I just, I was seeking a little clarification on that. Would that be after the current term expires because they're bound to the terms and conditions of the current term throughout the remainder of the contract? And I don't want to do anything that disrupts that. So, would it be to, to restart a new agreement within the current term, or would it be after the current five-year term?
Sure.
Yes.
So, there's, there's, when, for negotiating this, there's different ways that we can, that we can approach this, right? What I, what I know right now is the city is clearly saying that they need an increase, right? That's what I'm hearing, that they need an increase. The county attorney is going to be doing her due diligence based on previous board direction, right? To have, basically, she's going to be going through the books, correct? So, what I, I, I think if we hold the line now, which according to the county attorney, it sounds like we have a good case based on our interlocal agreement, I think if we give our staff direction to go to them and say, hey, do we want to, do we want to look at starting a new, fresh five years next fiscal year, which would extend this? Or say, hey, do you want to start working on the next five-year agreement? There's, you know, there's different ways that we can approach negotiating the fire services assessment. And so, I can tell you right now, right, we're at a, we're at a standstill, where we're not seeing eye to eye on this. The only real way to move forward to put, in my opinion, is two-part. To put a foot down and say, hey, you're not going to violate this agreement with us, right? Because what kind of precedent does that set for any vendor? But two, let's look at what this looks like moving forward. You know, I think it's important for us to look, look at what it looks like moving forward. And I trust the county administrator to bring something back. We're not going to raise the rate 22%. I think that's clear. However, you know, we've, we've got to a point now, we've made it very clear, not raising the rate this year, right? However, let's look like what it looks like moving forward. It looks like there's some sentiment based on Blueprint, some commissioners want to move forward, and so, let's, let's see what it looks like. So, that's, that's my motion. If that makes sense to you, sorry for the, for the little.
So, the city voted to raise the rate, even though the local agreement says they can't raise the rate?
Correct.
Yeah. Without an agreement. All right. And that, that rate that they're raising is within the city limits? And those, well, no, wouldn't even be that anymore because those folks don't pay utility, city utilities anymore. So, those, so it would just be in the city limits. I tell you, I, hmm. So, there's one side of me that's, I, I like it, but then, I'm thinking through, if we go this route, there would be a cost associated with it?
Yeah, ultimately, potentially. So, the ADR process, we don't typically go immediately to arbitration. The last issue was we were trying to get something resolved before the beginning of the next fiscal year. And in that instance, the city had agreed to waive the, the staff discussion, go to Vincent Reese and talk, go to mediation. Vincent's staff had, had already been talking, you know? Those two had effectively already happened. What we really skipped over was mediation, although the arbitration panel is going to make us go to mediation anyway. So, so what we would do is start at the beginning, and we would, it would be staff-level discussions. If that doesn't work, it would escalate to the county administrator and city manager to try to resolve it. If that doesn't work, we would go to mediation, non-binding mediation. And if that didn't work, that would trigger arbitration. So, depending on how far along in that process things went, that's, that's going to dictate to some extent your cost.
Okay. So, pretty much, yes. If I'm the city, if they, if they, if they have been bold enough to raise the rate 10%, even though the, the agreement said they can't raise the rate 10%, I would imagine that they're willing to take this thing all the way to arbitration. I think before we go that route, I, I said something during our blueprint meeting, I still believe it. The, the city could elect to just, because the city go that route, you said they would have to pay it back, because they've already, they've already increased it, which means it's going to be collected while we're going through this process, correct? Or it'd be a stop?
They, they've not had their final budget hearing, I think, where they actually would adopt the new rate. That's my understanding.
Right.
I think they meet next week, right? Is it next week? So, that would be their final action.
Yes.
Is my understanding would be next week. That's what would trigger a breach.
Okay. So, when they trigger that breach, if we take this step, then basically, even though they triggered the breach, then we would be able to stop them from collecting the fee before they collect anything?
No, there would never be time for us to do that. They would collect something before an injunction would be imposed.
Right. So, you said that they would, if, if we prevail, all the money that's collected would have to be paid back?
Would definitely be seeking different remedies, including potentially, if it's determined to be invalid, that they repay that money. That's generally what happens when you impose an invalid assessment.
It'd be paid back to who?
Ratepayers.
Ratepayers.
The ratepayers.
All right. I would like to see us take a step first, obviously. I want us to all, I want us to take the opportunity for us all to sit down at the table, just like I said at the blueprint meeting, to see if we can't talk our way through this, because do we have to go that far? Is there some kind of way within the next month, two months, that we can all sit down, city and county, and talk through this? I, I truly believe that if we go this route, eventually, the city will get to a point that they will trigger the cancellation of the contract, which would give us roughly about, what, two years? Under the, under the current contract?
The current term goes to the end of fiscal year 2028, so it would expire unless it's renewed in whatever form, September 30th, 2028.
Right. And so, let's say we go this route, we, they start collecting, they're approved next week, they start collecting, they collect, we go this route, and then at the end of the year, they end up, we prevail, they end up paying back to the ratepayers. Then they're probably going to cancel the contract, and then we have to go through this process. Again, I, I just, is there any kind of way, Commissioner Caban, that before we go here, because we got a meeting in a month, that we could, we could try to see if there's an opportunity for us all to sit down with the city and have a conversation about how we move forward on this? Only, only reason I ask is because if I can avoid, let's say we sit at that table, and they say, okay, well, we're just going to go ahead and trigger the decision that everybody makes, because what you, you said, the county administrator start talking through what the next five-year rate, rate study looks like. This is the shit that everybody makes is, okay, this ain't working for nobody. How do we trigger that 18-month or two-year clause so, so we can go ahead and get rid of this and start working through what the next, what the next, what the next iteration of this agreement looks like? Or the city comes back and say, well, we're not, we're not willing to work with you all at all, so you need to be thinking about how you do it in the future anyway? I just think we're talking over here, they're talking over there, we're not talking together, and we're just throwing legal stuff back and forth, and this is going to cost money. So, is there any kind of way that you would consider for your substitute motion that before we take the steps that you're asking for, that you would ask the city for a sit-down meeting where we talk through fire services, the rate now, and what it looks like in the future?
County Attorney, County Administrator, did you have a question?
This is, usually commissioners, I'm very cautious, as you know, about stepping on any motions and that sort of thing. So, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to do that. But Commissioner Maddox, I heard where you're, you were going with that, and I totally respect the spirit of that. I would just, for your consideration throughout there, that it's, it's probably a whole heck of a lot easier for us to get marching orders from the board.
Okay.
And for them to do this, rather than put, and try to do a negotiation by a very, very large committee, and that, and that sort of thing. So, it could get very unwieldy, and I just offer that as food for thought.
Okay. I appreciate it. So, let me ask you this, Mr. Administrator. I'm trying, I'm, I'm attempting for us to do everything we can do before we get to the point, just like we did before, of us going through this arbitration and spending money that we probably don't want to spend on this process. Is there anything short of what Commissioner Caban is asking for that we can do before we take the step?
Well, the, and Chastity, and the county attorney can feel free to jump in on this, this would necessarily happen when the city, if they decide to exercise their notice within, in the agreement, to put us on notice that they do not intend to extend the agreement, the 18-month notice, then that would necessarily trigger, at that point in time, the city manager, myself, getting together and saying, hey, you know, again, can this be worked out? What would the terms be? And that sort of thing, 18 months out or before then? So, again, and I think the or before then is part of what Commissioner Caban's motion was. So, that, you know, again, that, that, that process can be prompted before then, but it would happen presumably 18 months out if the city was to exercise their, their out provision. But let me defer to Chastity if she has anything to add to that.
No, that's correct. I mean, they can always exercise it. I mean, they can always exercise it prior to the 18 months, which again would trigger, uh, discussions and potential negotiations of a new revised agreement and what that would look like, would depend, would require the mutual agreement of the parties. Uh, both parties would have to come together and agree to all the terms and conditions. Um, I mean, but in the meantime, I think part of the existing motion is for, is to give the county administrator authority to, to negotiate a new rate agreement, uh, whether, you know, that's next year, whether that's at the end of the current term. Um, that already contemplates, I think, in part, what you're talking about, Commissioner Maddox, although I think you were talking, are you talking about the, the commissions getting together to talk it through?
I was talking about commissions, the commissions getting together, but I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Administrator, that, that becoming complicated, but, okay. Um, okay. Well, all right.
Yeah, let me ask.
As I'm thinking through it, I'm going to go ahead and rescind my motion. At, at best, we'll go with Commissioner Caban's approach. They'll trigger it if they, if they go up 10%. At that point, my thought is they're probably, at some point, if they know they can't do it because of the contract, they will, uh, exercise their right to cancel the, the existing contract, and will start to renegotiate. Um, I just wish there was a, there was a, there was a different way for us to go about this, but Commissioner Caban, you are right on a few, on a few levels there. One, um, for them to, for the city, and I understand where they are, and I understand what they're going through, and I understand, I even understand why they're going up to 10%. But there's a contract there that says you can't. And if we just do nothing and allow that, then that puts us in a position of, what, what did we do when they, when they did what they did? And I, and I can't, I can't, as much as I would like for us to be in a position to be able to get through this without a lot of conflict, the contract is what it is. So, I'm going to support Commissioner Caban's motion that's on the floor. Um, and I hope, I hope that we're able to come to some agreement that puts us in a good, in a better place as far as the way we, um, charge and conduct ourselves when it comes to fire services in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner Minor. So everybody's in the queue.
Madam Attorney, is a rate study required before the city can raise their rates on fire services?
Yes. Uh, you always have to have a methodology and a rate study to justify whatever rate you want to impose. That's why historically we've always had a rate study, but it's been a joint rate study because it is both the city and the county, uh, imposing the assessment, both in the incorporated and unincorporated area.
Has there been a singular or a joint rate study by the city or with the county prior to the 10% suggested increase?
So, the one that's currently in effect was adopted in 2023 when the third term went into effect. Okay, that's the one that we're currently operating under, and that's the fee that the county imposes and that the county agreed to impose again next year in fiscal year 2026. Earlier this year, when the city said, hey, we need a rate increase, we engaged the rate consultant, but what they developed was a rate study based on, uh, rates to be imposed in both the unincorporated and the incorporated area. So again, it was a joint rate study that applied countywide. That is not what, and the county said no. So that, what I'll call fourth rate study, has not been adopted by the county, it has not been incorporated into the interlocal agreement, that is not a valid basis for either the city or the county to impose assessments. I don't know what the city is relying on for its proposed increase, but what I can tell you is Accenture, which is the consultant that's previously been used, has not developed a rate study for this city under its new proposed rate increase.
Okay, thank you. And if I recall correctly, the lady from Accenture, when asked at her company Dunn a rate study, um, she indicated that the city gave her the numbers by which they were, uh, basing. Is that accurate, my recollection?
Well, to be clear, that, the methodology was developed years ago. What, what the lady from Accenture said was that the component where you basically drop the numbers into the methodology, you run basically your calculations, and that spits out your rate. What she said is she gets the cost numbers from the city. But, but that methodology was developed by that third-party consultant years ago.
My question to her that evening was not with respect to methodology, it was with respect to numbers. And she indicated quite plainly, she didn't know how to, or what the basis of the city had said, because she was given that. So, that, uh, so-called rate study was limping. And far as I was concerned, it was a DOA, uh, as a basis for which they arrived at 22%. My next question, um, Madam Attorney, is, um, can the city increase the fire, uh, fee or rates by 10% without the Board of County Commissioners' approval in the city limits?
What I would say is they cannot do that without violating our interlocal agreement. They're going to violate the, they're going to breach interlocal agreement if they do that.
What is the strongest legal option that we have in terms of, uh, preventing the violation, or if they, uh, continue to move forward? Uh, what legal remedy do we have to prevent, um, our agreement from being violated? Does injunction, is it enough, as suggested by Commissioner Caban?
We would seek all available remedies, but an injunction, if it's granted, would prevent them from continuing to
Move forward.
Impose and collect that increased rate after the injunction is granted.
Okay. In your, um, studied opinion, uh, do you believe that the city has read the agreement? And do you believe they are intelligent and competent enough to understand that in this bilateral agreement, that Leon County's government's approval is needed to move forward first? And do you believe that the city is just willfully, if, if they understand, and I'm not giving credit where it's not, where it doesn't belong, but if they can interpret that also a rate study has to proceed and increase in fees, do you believe the city really understands that, or do you believe that they, they don't get it?
County staff has talked with city staff and made its understanding of the interlocal agreement crystal clear.
So, there's been a lot of talk recently about hate speech. Uh, but these acts of the city, if they understand with clarity, is the willful disregard and disrespect of their partner, the county. And they're willing to chump us, uh, notwithstanding the memorandum of agreement, it's just, it's, it's hate speech, it's a hate walk, and they're willing to walk through us, notwithstanding, uh, the commitment they're to make to a competent rate study. That last one, based on Accenture's comments, to me, was inadequate. She didn't know. But we rolled it out. They offered, uh, for us to fall on and get behind and just shut up and follow suit, that after two years, we would allow them to go up 22%. And then, without getting paid no money, we was going to collect 100% of that additional 22%. And I'd even keep none and fork it over to them. We're being played, ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentleman. And, um, this underscores the fact that, um, if, uh, any legal, uh, disagreement occurred, is it likely to happen in the county court or circuit courts?
It would happen first befo- before the arbitration panel and ultimately potentially before the circuit court.
To the Florida where?
Circuit court.
Circuit court. And where's that located?
In this courthouse.
Okay. So, I'm sort of thinking that, uh, we got a little, just a little small, if only psychological, home court advantage. Every court that this measure would go before is located in this building that we sit at the top of. I'm willing commissioners for our council to go down there, downstairs, and stand up for the people, uh, inside of the incorporated area, which I represent, and the MOU which we have in place, uh, unless they suffer mental incapacity, the city. Um, I believe they are willfully disregarding us. And to the extent that this is a willful disregard, is, is to the extent invariably with which we ought to stand and protect all of the citizens, uh, not just those in the unincorporated area, but both Commissioner Cummings and Maddox, y'all represent literally, you do represent everybody in the city and everybody in the county. And, uh, I have to support Commissioner Caban's stance that we, uh, be respected as a government. This, we are a government. And if we get trampled upon, um, as a government walked over like that, then, then, then shame on us. And I believe that we, we're not bullying, we, uh, Commissioner Maddox, we're not trying to start a fight. You know, we not, we're not the progenitors of an aggressive act. We're trying to stop taxes from going up, and if they do go up, follow the process of which county attorney said we're bound to follow. That's all we're doing. So, those things clarified, I'm supporting the motion of Commissioner Caban. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Who's next in the queue?
You know, O'Keefe will, O'Keefe will always step up if, you know, he think it's over.
Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner.
O'Keefe, be quiet. Just somebody else talk sometime besides me.
Commissioner Proctor, I'll learn from your example.
Leaving the desk, I'll be back.
Um, I, I, I have a question. I'm normally, we, you know, at our August special meeting, we authorized county attorney to withdraw arbitration, uh, mediation resolution on the rate issue for us because we, we acknowledged, we knew that it can't be raised without us. We, and we authorized county attorney and, and county administrator to hire a financial consultant to look at the books and records of the fire service fee fund, to investigate, to make sure all the obligations and funding history and allocations were correct. And then, we also authorized the county staff, either Vince or Chastity, to pursue dispute resolution on any disputable items that they find. Is that accurate of the direction we gave you in August?
That's accurate.
And is that still stand if we take no action today?
Yes.
And Vince, if the city reaches out and says, we want to negotiate again, do you need anything from us today to do that? Or do you currently have the authority to accept negotiation offers and bring them to us to consider?
Yes, I would be compelled to do so.
You don't need anything from us today to do that?
I do not.
Okay. And, let's see. And at this point, we know the, the city's having their hearing, uh, in a week, so we can't say, we don't, can't say for sure what they're going to do. But at this point, it's, it's too late for us to change what we're going to charge or do this coming year. Okay. So, my, I'm, I'm not going to support this motion. And the reason is because I am all for and have supported all along, even skipping a negotiated offer earlier in the year, which was rejected, I thought was way too generous, but turns out we were alone in that thought, um, at the time. And ultimately, from what's, you know, ultimately, we are going to have to resolve at some point. And so my thought has come around to, I like the process we left off with in August, because we protected what we initially meant to do, which is to prevent having to increase on the county citizens, uh, that we control the rate for. And in addition, though, the, I want to give the financial consultant time to work and bring us the information so we can make a well-informed decision. Because the way I see it is, we have this fire service fund and, and emergency reserve fund, and we believe there are possibilities that the city has not historically paid in as much as they are supposed to pay per the agreement, or have allocated things out of it that are, that are not allowed to allocate, and therefore perhaps the fund is not at the balance it should be per the agreement. And we're pursuing that information right now. I think to add in another issue, and to add in another, our dispute, uh, sort of railway at the same time, confuses the issue. I think we ought to let the information come back and make a well-informed decision on what all the issues are. And I do want to make it clear, my understanding from where we stand now is, we are not, we have not disempowered our county attorney to enter dispute resolution on anything that we find is disputable. Um, they're not waiting for us to tell them what to do. Um, and so, that would be my, um, that's, that's where I stand on this one. And when we get new information, when new things come back from the city, when we get financial consultant results, or if this motion passes and that's a new action, we have to update our, our consideration. But we are not, this is not an argument that is going to be won by one side crushing the other side, whether it's us or them. This is a family dispute that's going to be reconciled at some point over the years, or it's going to be real uncomfortable for everyone in the family. And so that's why I'm not supporting adding this effort at this time. Um, but I, it's important to keep our eyes on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner Minor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I know Commissioner Maddox withdrew his motion. Can I get clarification on the motion that's on the floor now, Commissioner Caban's motion?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Cummings, the motion is to start the dispute resolution process on the city violating the interlocal agreement. Meanwhile, it's a two-part motion, gives the county administrator authority to go basically negotiate with the city of what this looks like in the future. Um, from my understanding right now, there is, you know, I mean, we're clearly at a crossroad, but we don't agree. I think it's, it's not appropriate to allow any vendor, no matter who it is, to just actively violate an agreement that we have with them. I don't think it sets a good precedent. So, that is why I think, hey, listen, we're out of, we're out of standstill. Let the county administrator go meet with the city representation and bring it back to us of what it looks like for future fiscal years.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had it clear in my mind. Uh, but Madam County Attorney, I think you indicated that at this point, we really don't have a breach yet. We have to wait until the city meets and votes on, I guess, the proposal to increase the city fire user fees.
Their final.
And I know they've discussed it, they very likely will do it, but at this point, they haven't. So number one, we have to wait for that, to see if that occurs.
Yes.
And if that occurs, uh, in your position, that's contrary to the language of the interlocal agreement that we have, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you talked about, um, 18 months. Is that eight, 18-month notice that triggers, uh, I guess, notice of non-renewal or, or renewal? Is that 18 months before the end of the contract or eight, before the end of the contract? Okay.
It's 18 months before the current term is scheduled to end.
And we are within a five-year contract. Right, five-year term. We're two years in, going on three years into this current contract, and, um, even though it's And, um, even though it's a five-year contract, the city has opted to change the terms of the interlocal agreement unilaterally, right? But we really don't have a breach yet, if, is that correct?
We will know next week whether we have a breach.
I'm sorry?
We will know next week.
Uh, we'll know next week if we have a breach. So, your motion is contingent upon their actions next week. Okay. Now, I, I do recall this, Commissioner O'Keefe pointed out that, of course, we addressed this before. And we took our position on what we felt should be done going forward uh, with the dispute resolution process. Depending on what the city does next week, Madam Attorney, do we have an option or in your opinion of whether to pursue the ADR process or go to legal route for injunct, injunctive relief, uh, against the city? Would we give them notice and give them maybe so many days to respond, which would give an opportunity, I guess, for discourse, dialogue, discussion? But what is your, I guess, your recommendation on how we proceed?
All disputes under the interlocal agreement are subject to resolution under the alternative dispute resolution provision.
Okay.
So, so if in fact, uh, there is anything to dispute under the interlocal agreement, it triggers that ADR process, we would have to go through that process first. Uh, if it gets far enough along, the last step is arbitration. And again, the arbitration panel has the authority to issue a temporary injunction. Then we would have to go to circuit court to obtain a permanent injunction. But the way our interlocal agreement is written, we can't go straight to circuit court. We have to follow that ADR process in our interlocal agreement first. We have to exhaust that.
Okay. So that's not an option at this point because we would be in violation if, if we jumped over the ADR process. But in your opinion, the instructions, not instructions, of the direction, I'd rather say direction, of the directives that, uh, we gave, um, moving forward when, when all of this came to fruition before the commission a couple of months ago. In your opinion, was that direction clear enough for you to move forward on behalf of, of the county based on what the city decides to do when they meet next week?
My understanding of the previous direction from the board was to engage the financial consultant and determine if there were various instances of under-collection.
Right.
And if in fact that is validated, to bring that information back to the board, but also to initiate the alternative dispute resolution to address that underfunding. The, a breach, like we're, we're talking about now, which is where they are violating the interlocal agreement by imposing a rate inconsistent with the rate study adopted in the interlocal agreement, is a different issue than what we had on the table back then. This, this is, this is a newer development
Right.
since the board gave direction last time.
Okay. Because at that point, we had no idea that they would move forward and raise rate just for the city users.
That's correct.
And I, and I think, in their opinion, they have jurisdiction over the city, whether or not the county agrees or not. We are looking at user fees for our county, I guess, constituents in the unincorporated area, areas. And it's those citizens that we voted not to increase the user fee on pursuant to the city's recommendation. So they sort of bifurcated it. They've excluded the, the, uh, user fee from the unincorporated citizens. And they are raising it, uh, on those individuals that are within the city limits, municipal users. Is that pretty much?
Potentially, they were going to raise those rates for the properties in the unincorporated area that they build on the utility bill. They won't be able to do that going forward because we changed our ordinance. So it was potentially going to apply, not just in the incorporated area, but in the portions of the unincorporated area as well. Uh, because that's what they had authority, that those are the properties they had authority to collect on. Now, it will just be in the incorporated area, except potentially for government property. Because you can't impose an assessment against government property, okay? So if it's non-governmental property, it's an assessment. If it's government property, it's a fee. We only use the uniform method of collection. So we only collect the assessment piece. So going forward, the city will still collect the, the fee from government property, both in the incorporated and the unincorporated area.
But for the amendment to our ordinance, they would have, even though we didn't agree to it, no consensus on it from the county, they would have just raised the, the fee for everybody, for the most part.
I assume so.
Ah, okay. Okay. So because we have that issue now that wasn't before us when we gave direction a couple of months ago, uh, that's why, I guess, your motion is on the floor. Okay. All right. I see. And it is a totally different issue. I'm not sure if the directions that we gave two months ago would, would clearly address where we are now. So I, I see the distinction. It wouldn't?
Mm-mm.
No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the, for the clarification.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Minor, and then I'm gonna take a bite at it. Everybody's had one bite at it. So I got Commissioner Proctor and O'Keefe back in the, back in here. Go ahead, Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Minor, I'm sorry.
It's all right. It's, it's late.
It's getting late.
Let me, let me talk through something that might be a resolution that's, that's similar to what Commissioner Caban is talking about, but, um, doesn't go into the dispute resolution, you know, legal actions and all, and, and all those exercises. So, where we are right now, we have a five-year agreement per, per, per contract that requires mutual agreement by both parties before it's amended. That exists right now. Now, the city has the option to execute a fif, an 18-month termination period, right? So that's where we are right now. Um, on May 27th, we, we all had the idea that the city basically could impose upon us the fire service fee. At that time, we offered the city, uh, what I call the, the good faith compromise, right? We agreed with them on increasing the, um, uh, the, the fire service fee to pay for the fire stations for 15 and 17, construction on those, um, and also for the firefighter salaries. If I remember correctly, we did not agree on the increases related to the ISO rating as well as the debt refinancing. And my reason for agreeing to that compromise was because those were voluntary costs, uh, that they were bringing upon themselves, upon us, uh, 18 months into that five-year term, right? So, we had a good faith offer to them that, uh, paid for most of the increase. There was, I think, I think it's a $10, um, reduction from what they had asked us to do. So we offered, we sent that, uh, compromise over. The city rejected that. But then we learned that, no, the, the interlocal agreement requires mutual agreement by both parties for that, uh, for any increases or any changes to the interlocal agreement to be, uh, effective. So, I believe, I don't know for sure, but I believe that a majority of the city commission, if they could go back to that time and decide whether they wanted to, uh, approve that compromise, I think that they would. So what I propose, uh, instead of going through the legal machinations here, what, what I would propose is, let's give our county administrator the authority to reach out to the city, if the city's willing to talk, to talk about fiscal year 27. Basically, that good faith compromise that we offered on May 27th would still be in play for fiscal year 27. Um, if the city is willing to agree to that good faith compromise we made back then, we could then, for fiscal year 27, um, if we chose to, this board could vote to approve that compromise. If we do that, then, then both parties in that interlocal agreement agree to amending the agreement. What that does is that keeps the five-year agreement in play. Because if both parties agree, we can have that five-year contract remain in play. And if the city agrees to that, they won't be issuing that termination notice that we think might be coming. So, and if you take the emotion out of this from both sides, and you look at this as just a, a business transaction, what do we do to, to have both sides resolve this as, as easily as possible so that both sides get what they need, which is funding fire service? I think that's probably a good idea. Um, now, I don't know if the city will agree, but in my opinion, this step is the first best one we should take because we save money on the legal actions. We save, you know, the, the, you know, the dispute resolution, all of that. We just have the county attorney talk to the city manager and offer that. I would guess that the city commission would approve that, that compromise if they could go back and do that now. And what I'm proposing is that we do it for fiscal year 27. So, Commissioner Caban, I, I, I know what you're trying to do, but I, I would want to offer a friendly amendment to your motion, basically stating that, giving the county, giving the county administrator the ability to reach out to the city, offer that good faith compromise once again for fiscal year 27, and see what they say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Caban, do you want to speak to that? You said you had a known point. He's asking if you want to take the amendment.
Um, Commissioner Minor, I will respect, respectfully decline the amendment. And the, the reason for that, if I may, uh, we're at a different place now than where we were three months ago. And I, I don't, I don't want to rehash a lot of the things, but there's been a lot of new findings related to the fire services fee that have come to light, where it's under-collecting, undercharging. Some people are paying, some people are not paying. And so, I love your, the spirit and where your heart's at here. But I, I have a fundamental problem with, uh, listen, the city referred to our, our unincorporated residents as customers, right? That's what they said in, in a commission meeting. I believe they referred to them as customers. And to us, they're our residents, they're our neighbors, they're our friends, they're people we represent. And so, I, I have an issue with just allowing them to go and break our interlocal agreement right now. I think it sets a bad precedent for anybody that we do business with that say, "Hey, you can violate our written agreement." And to me, it's, you know, there's, it's, you know, it's no different than a handshake agreement. You look someone in the eyes, you shake their hand, this is their word, is, the word is their bond. And I feel like what's going on right now is, you know, and I will say this, Commissioner Minor, I believe you are correct. If the city had the ability to approve the 17% increase, they would. I think it's important to know they turned down our 17% increase, and then they voted for a 10% increase. So to us, this wasn't personal. We were operating in the best interest of taxpayers. It, it appears like to them, it, they just didn't want to agree to a compromise through, through their ego. And so for right now, I, I typically would accept the friendly amendment, right? But I like the, I think a lot has changed since then. And I just have a fundamental problem with us not putting our foot down and saying, "Hey, we're not gonna allow you to break this agreement right now where we're at." And that's why my motion was tailored to say, "Hey, we're gonna put our foot down here." However, I do agree with the sentiment that we need to work this out. That's why we give the county administrator authority to go start talking through that. Does that make sense?
It, it does, Commissioner Caban, it, it does. Um, what I would say to you back though, is that we've got leverage in, in two ways. We've got the five-year agreement right now, that now both parties know we have to have mutual agreement on any amendments. That's leverage that we didn't know we had on May 27th. Here's the other thing. They know they're in violation of the interlocal agreement. They know that. And, um, I'm sure that they would rather not be. They would rather not have some citizen that, that sues them in court because of this violation of the interlocal agreement that, that has, that now has to pay a higher fire service fee. I'm sure they're looking for ways to be in compliance of the interlocal agreement. That puts us in a good position. So, uh, I, I, I know you, uh, thanks for your consideration of the friendly amendment. What I'd like to do is, let's just give it a shot. I'd like to have a substitute amendment, which basically stays, would, would do what I, what I'm, what I'm requesting. Is that the county attorney reaches out to the city manager, talks about that good faith compromise that we made on May 27th for fiscal year 27. That's my substitute amendment.
Do we, is that improper? Do we have to vote on a substitute amendment, or, I mean, does that have to be accepted? I mean, why?
Substitute motion.
So it's, so.
We're already on a substitute motion.
No, the, uh,
We're not?
Commissioner Maddox rescinded his main motion, so Caban's.
So you're making a substitute motion?
Yes, yes.
All right. We got a substitute motion from Commissioner Minor. Is there a second? Seeing none, it dies for lack of a second. It was a second, it was a substitute motion. Um, can I go?
Point of, point of information? I am so sorry.
Sure.
My weeks are all off. We are out of our normal meeting cycle. The city commission meets this Wednesday, not next week.
Day after tomorrow, 17.
Sorry. Just wanted to make sure I clarified that for the
All right.
Record.
So. Commissioners, I, I think it's a good, I think it's a good approach. I, I think it's a smart approach to take this. If there's not a second, I know the motion dies on the floor, but, um, did my best. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Um,
Okay.
What are we doing? Yeah. And this, can I, can I go? Um, yeah, I've, I've not gone yet. Everybody's, we're about to start round two, all right? It's 9:30. Oh, my, that's right, it says 9:30. Oh, mine, my bad. No, it's 9:05. Go ahead, Mr. County Administrator, and then I'll go.
Sure. And, and Ms. Chairman, this just, again, to be clear, because I realize there's a lot of moving parts here, and I just want to be very clear, um, about where, where we are currently. I mean, Commissioner O'Keefe, I think, spelled it out well in terms of what the standing direction is. And, and I hear Commissioner Caban, um, in, in his motion, suggesting that the, the commission, you know, take this action relative to the city's breach of the contract. I totally get that as well. And obviously, the board can, can, can give us that direction. The second part of that motion, and I just want to be very clear about this. The second part of that motion provides that we would begin negotiations. Now, I want to be clear because this is really important. My current marching orders now are that, is to enforce the existing agreement, which is that the city has to provide services through the remainder of the agreement at the current rate. If I negotiate now, I'm asking them what their proposed increases are within the existing term. And, and, and that's what would be coming back. Today, we intend to enforce the agreement throughout the existing term, which would mean that they would have to provide it with, with no increase unless the board agrees to it. Now, I believe what the, what, what the city will come back with is to say that, again, that here's what we would propose for increased rates during the current term. And that we would, and again, I don't want to, but I think this is pretty clear, that we would not agree, to, um, to clarify in any proposed new agreement that the board would have to agree to our rates for a multi-year term. They've been pretty clear about that. So again, I just wanted to be clear, again, my current marching orders, and this is just for the board's consideration, are to, 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 again, take the county's position that there are no increases for the remainder of the term that doesn't expire until the end of '28. The, the, the motion on the table, and again, we're perfectly receptive to it, would be to enter into negotiations, which would ostensibly request the city what their proposed rate increases would be in the existing term or beyond. And I heard Commissioner Caban say that too. It could be beyond that five years. But I just wanted to let you know, it's, it's different than the current marching orders that I'm under, and I just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay. Uh, just quickly, um, Commissioner Caban, I, I would, given the direction, or given what the county administrator said, I think we might need to take this one step at a time. Let's just remove the piece of negotiation, keep the rest of it, allow us to get through to see what they're gonna do. Because once they, once they've triggered the 18-month thing, then we can come back and then, then give the direction to the county administrator to reach out and start negotiating. But right now, I think, what I'm understanding, from what I'm hearing him say, this may open him up to start negotiating about what they would want to do now. And I don't think we want to do that. As I remember, to Commissioner, um, Minor, when we had this discussion before, I had actually, one of the things I brought up is, when we send this, our, our negotiation back across the street, and I think the direction the county, the county attorney said, well, if we do that, it kind of opens us up to say, well, do we really not agree with, or do we really, do, it compromises our stance that we have a contract. our stance that we have a contract. So Commissioner Caban, I would ask that you, if you would, remove the piece of negotiation by the county administrator, wait until we play through the first part of your motion.
Is it okay if I hear the chairman talk?
Of course, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, I appreciate Commissioner Minor's gesture, and I completely agree with what Commissioner Caban said in response to that, is that we were in a totally different posture at that time when we offered that compromise. And it was in the posture of, we don't have a choice. And then we learned that we do have a choice, actually. We have an obligation, I would say, not just a choice, but an obligation. Our county attorney is telling us that if they approve their 10% fire service fee mid-cycle rate increase on Wednesday of this week, they are in violation of our interlocal agreement. I sat right here on this dais and said, which was quoted in the newspaper, "We have established that they cannot raise the fire services fee even in the city limits without our permission." We have to stand on that, in my opinion. We are obligated to stand on that. We have established now, we have sent our attorney out to establish this. Now, I can roll with what Commissioner Maddox is suggesting. We take that first step. We establish tonight that we are going to challenge their 10% mid-cycle rate hike in the city limits. See what they do on Wednesday. If they do, then become in violation of the interlocal agreement, then, at our September meeting, I mean, our October meeting, we can reassess. We can say, okay, let's go, let's see what's on their mind. Maybe we can work, maybe then we can actually work together to determine what really is needed to move forward, as opposed to just being told what is needed to move forward. And so, that would be my position. And I'm fine with the second part of Commissioner Caban's motion, because I think it kind of sets that conversation in motion right away, as opposed to waiting till Wednesday. But, I mean, I think it's abundantly clear to me that we have an obligation to challenge the city's violation of interlocal agreement. Obviously, we want to work with the city, but we are, we have, we are compelled to make them work with us, as opposed to just acting willy-nilly. And we offered a compromise, they rejected it with prejudice, and then went ahead and did it anyway, even after we told them that they couldn't do it without our permission. And so, it's now, it's incumbent on the city to act in good faith with its county customers to ensure that the county commission, who represents the county's customers, represent them. And that's, to me, what this is about. Nobody wants to cancel the agreement. I don't think anybody sincerely wants to cancel the agreement. I don't think even anybody over there wants to cancel the agreement. They know that it's in the best interest of the entire community. But I think we, as the county commission, have to stand and say, look, we have an agreement. We have never not agreed with the city, as far as I know, in the many five-year cycles that we've had, right? We, we're on like, three or four, five-year cycles, you would say? Like, this county commission, this building, this board, this organization, has always consistently said, we, yeah, this is going to hurt a little bit, we're raising the fee, but city, you tell us, you know, you have a rate study, you have an actuary, this is what you need, we're going to walk with you here. This is new ground. They're coming to us now and going, hey, look, tough, we need more. Okay, well, we want to work with you, but you have to treat us correctly. We have an obligation to our constituents to stand on that business and make sure that we are advocating for what is right and just. And so, I think that, at a minimum, the first part of Commissioner Caban's motion is what I will support. And I'm okay with the second part, too, but I'm okay going with the will of the board if we want to wait and see what happens on Wednesday, and then let the county administrator react to that. I don't know what's the best track of business. The county administrator's explanation kind of, I faded out on that a little bit, so I'm not... Yeah, I mean, if you, if you wouldn't mind, like, if what I'm saying is correct, is what I'm saying...
First part of the motion, I hear what you're saying.
And then the second part.
And the second part of the motion is simply this, and the board can give me this direction, and believe me, when I say I would be receptive to it, 100%, but here's my point, I want the board to know one thing, which is that our current marching orders is, and which we can enforce, is that there are no increases in the fire services rate until 2028, 2029. If we begin negotiations, you will be giving me the direction ostensibly, to ask them what their proposed rate increases will be within the current term. And I'm suggesting that, whatever you do, just know that, and, because it's different than what the current marching order is.
Okay, so, I, I'm willing to go with whatever the board wants to do on that second part. If we want to say, hey, go renegotiate with us having a say in this cycle's increases, or just saying, we're going to, we want to negotiate about the next cycle, but we want to make sure that we get it right for the next cycle, so that we're not doing this again, I'm okay with either one of those, whatever y'all want to do. I just think the first part is very important. And that's kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure. And then I got Proctor, Commissioner O'Keefe, and Commissioner Minor.
Commissioners, the spirit of the latter part of that motion was to offer an olive branch and say, hey, listen, we're going to put our foot down on this, however, we want to work this out long-term, right? You know, if, I'm not married to the latter part, I'm willing to amend my motion, just go with the first part and come back with that. It sounds like, I see some nods from our colleagues. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and amend the motion to just, to spark, to begin the dispute resolution, give the county attorney to start the dispute resolution relating to the city violating the interlocal agreement with increasing the rate without our approval.
Okay, so who is the second?
Second.
Commissioner Proctor's on board with that. Is that, y'all got that? Okay. And then, if I may, commissioners, does that put us in the posture that I was describing, that now you got to wait till Wednesday to see what happens? Okay, perfect. All right. Commissioner Proctor, you are up again.
Madam Attorney was in the original MOU. Station 17, a part of what we signed on to build and help build, or is Station 17, for which $10 million addition to the original amount, comes to us unbeknownst to us, and is laid add-on, once the deal was stamped and sealed. Help us to understand Station 17's posture with respect to this MOU.
So, the third-term rate study that we're currently operating under, that was incurred by reference into the interlocal agreement, contemplated certain costs associated with Fire Station 17. In fact, and I don't have it in front of me, but it's either a footnote at the bottom of page two or three of the rate study, that says that that fire station is anticipated to be operational by the end of 2023. Okay? So, Fire Station 17 was definitely contemplated, and the construction cost was estimated to be $17 million, okay? So the rates that would have been imposed under that rate study would have contemplated the expenditure of $17 million. What we found out was that in 2024, the city actually bonded $27 million, $10 million in excess of what was agreed to under the rate study, and that money ostensibly is sitting in an account, waiting to be used. That's all I know about the status of Fire Station 17.
They bonded the money after?
They bonded the money in 2024, in $27 million.
So, if I get this right, I'll use analogy, a metaphor. If I went downtown to borrow $17 million, I was a co-signer with Commissioner Minor. Well, yeah. And that sounded real good. And we signed $17 million, and that's what I signed up for. But I learned, you know, a few months later, that him, he went back to the bank and changed that one, 17, to one, he switched it to a two. Is that sort of like what's happened here with us?
Part of what is in dispute is the debt refinancing that the city has incurred as a result of, in part, and at least in part, that additional $10 million. They didn't inform the county like they are required to under the interlocal agreement, but they just went ahead and started pulling that money out of the debt service reserve fund or out of the fire services fund. That's part of the, what we want the financial consultant to look at, to determine whether that was in violation of the interlocal agreement, and whether, in fact, since they did it unilaterally, the city should have to pay that on its own and not out of the fire services fund or the reserve fund.
Right. So, Madam Attorney, thank you. It's real, real, real good. So, the city came to us, and we were advised that this 22% was badly needed, badly needed. And among the justifiers was Fire Station 17. My first question is, is our rating as a government, AAA rating on the line, and are we exposed to the additional from 17 to 27? Does that incur our debt standing and capacity by the city adding $10 million? Is we also standing in debt for this additional $10 million? Or is it the city alone standing there?
It was a city debt refinancing that they did. But please understand, the amount that they were proposing as part of the 22% increase was more than even the $27 million for Fire Station 17. They recalculated their estimate to be, I think, $34 million for Fire Station 17. So it went from $17 million in 2023, when they said in the rate study that it should be finished and completed and operational by the end of 2023, to when they issued debt in 2024, $27 million, to a revised estimate of $34 million. They did put a bid out on the street at the end of July, but they pulled it back before they ever got any actual bids in, to determine what the actual construction amount would be for Fire Station 17.
Okay. So, we were told as part of justification for the 22%, badly needed, badly needed, and we were supposed to roll over and just go along. We, being good-hearted citizens as this board is, said, well, we can't let you take advantage of the people with no notice and follow the contract, but even though you haven't followed the MOU, well, we're going to hold our nose and look this way, and we'll go with you for 17%. And the city looked at us and said, how dare you chumps not honor us? And they turned down the 17%, which was our rebuttal. Now, I'm trying to understand, county attorney, I'm not, I know you're getting a lot of questions from all of us, but I'm trying to reconcile what happened to the badly needed, badly needed 22%. We said 17, they said no, they come back with a 10%. What happened from 10% to the 22% county-wide, that the 10% inside the city? Because my calculations are just guesstimates, rather, not calculations, and I'm not as good as Commissioner O'Keefe, but if you dropped a 22% increase county-wide, like, to offset and meet this badly needed, badly needed, should have been around about 34%, 35% increase on the city to offset this fall that you didn't get county-wide at 22%. It should have gone to meet their number somewhere in the 30% increase inside incorporated area. And I'm trying to understand what has happened to ameliorate and to bring back, and what mitigates against this 22% down to 10% inside of the city limit. What, how can we, how do we understand that?
I don't know the inner workings of that, but what I can tell you is, they've publicly said that they have pulled back the expansion of Fire Station 15, and they have pulled back the construction of Fire Station 17, again, even though they supposedly have $27 million sitting there in an account to pay for it. And I think they've also represented that they are just using the 10% to pay what is required to meet their obligations under their fire union contracts. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, my last question, Mr. Chairman, back to the rate study. Is there a rate study that undergirds the current ask of 10% by the city that's moving forward, and I guess will be adopted on Wednesday?
Not by Accenture. I don't know what they're relying on. I don't know.
Very good. I'm very comfortable, commissioners, these further clarification. Support Commissioner Caban's. And one thing that I was told many years ago, is that you don't play hardball using a plastic bat. And I believe that if we're going to empower our staff to step up and play hardball, we needn't give them a plastic bat. And I'm well satisfied that the steps that we've empowered them to move forward with are in place, in our direction, per the county administrator's comments, they're clear. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner O'Keefe, then Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Cummings, and maybe we'll take a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to support the motion, which, to be clear, hasn't changed at all, so I don't know why I'm missing it. But to be clear, is to empower our county attorney to pursue dispute resolution if the city breaches the agreement by raising their rates on Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay. And I want, I appreciate the county administrator for bringing in what I think had gotten lost now is incorporated. We, separate from all of that, we have an agreement for the next three years that is a good agreement for us and for our citizens, and I hope we don't touch that. Let's not open that, let's not crack that open, let's focus on enforcing it, which is what we're doing. We have three years where this rate cannot increase unless we agree to it. I know it's late, but this is important, so I appreciate everyone sticking around for it. And I initially was worried, pursuing this dispute resolution after the city increased rates, after they billed people or noticed people, would cause confusion. But Commissioner Welch, you said it well, and it finally clicked. I know other commissioners said it before. It is our obligation to represent our constituents in this agreement, even if it causes confusion. And so, I appreciate that, I can support this, and I hope that we can unanimously support this, given the significant effort and significant decision it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lot of good discussion on this. I'm fine with the motion as it's currently stated. I had some concerns about the initial version of it. You know, we've used language like hardball, and, you know, we can't, we can't let them do this to us, and I'm paraphrasing, but I don't think that's the right language, you know? I mean, we need to kind of take a lot of that out of this discussion, because, and I know you all know this, I mean, we're here to serve the people that live in Leon County, and to do the best thing for them. And so, when, if the vote takes place on Wednesday, the way we think it's going to go, the county administrator will speak with the city manager and his staff to try to negotiate I hope part of that might be the good faith compromise that we offered, possibly next fiscal year, fiscal year 27, because I think that's an important part of this. You know, we do need to, you know, I would like to have Station 15 and 17 back on the table. The county needs those, the people that live in Leon County need those stations. And so, I think everything's on the table with the county administrator, should that vote take place in the city commission.
I don't think that's the direction we're going.
Well, everything's on the table. What, let me ask the county administrator, what would be on the table in terms of your ability to negotiate with the city?
The city would have to initiate those negotiations. Either they would do that through their, giving us notice, the 18-month... Either they would do that through their giving us notice, the 18-month notice, or not. But my marching orders would be to stay consistent, would be to continue to enforce the current terms of the agreement, which is that there are no rate increases throughout the remainder of the agreement.
So, the two options were to maintain the, the current agreement under the current?
Well, the, the, one of the options went away. The, the option that stuck was the dispute resolution related to the breach in the contract.
Gotcha, gotcha. Gotcha, okay. I'll vote for the motion. I, I think I'm concerned that this type of action is going to blow something up as opposed to putting it together. I think this is territory that we, there's a better approach, and I know I didn't get a second on the motion, and I, I accept it. I think there's a better approach to this because I, I think we need to focus more on, on trying to find a resolution that works for everybody as opposed to puffing our chest up and acting like we're tough. Because at the end of the day, the people that live in Leon County need fire service, and they need Stations 15 and 17. I'll support the motion because I do think it's important to be unanimous, but I've got some concerns about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Cummings, you're our last one in the queue.
Real brief, Mr. Chair, thank you so much. Madam County Attorney, do you know the status of the financial consultant? Has that person already come on board and found discrepancies or irregularities in what's happening with the contract?
We have agreed on a final scope, and we've been in the process of obtaining the records that the consultant will need to review, but she's ready to actually start the review. So, we're, we've been actively going back and forth, talking with her, validating, again, the records and documentation she needs, and so, we're, we're ready to begin that process.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm supporting the, the motion that's on the floor. I think it's great, you know, that we take a bifurcated process, not just jump right into it, give the county administrator, who I think most of us have a lot of, of faith in, and confidence in, give him an opportunity initially based on what the city does Wednesday, you know? And he can always come back, Commissioner Caban, and address the second, you know, part of your original, original motion. But right now, I feel comfortable that we're doing what we need to do to try to be, as Commissioner Minor would say, I think, a little congenial and take a lot, take a lot of the emotion out of it, and I think our county administrator has the ability to clearly do that. So, I will be supporting the motion on the floor as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order after you execute this motion.
Okay. All right. We've got a, a motion and a second. I think, who's the maker of the motion? Commissioner Caban, second is Mr. Proctor. All right. We've got a motion and a second for the issue on the fire services with the city. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. So it passes unanimously. Commissioner Proctor, go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I was pondering, and County Attorney said I had to bring it up in, in front of Lotte Dottie and everybody, and this is not an effort to duck tonight's meeting. But I'd like to, for you to contemplate a continuation of tonight's meeting to possibly Thursday evening, which gives time to give advertisement, notice to the public that we continue. I have, I have, and we probably all have some concerns, the open carry decision by the first District Court of Appeals.
Yeah, right.
Which proposes to allow, or to eliminate, rather, the need for gun restrictions. We got over 70,000 college students. There's a lot to adjust to by September 25th, and I really want us to have a strong hearing on that tonight. The fairground situation, I really want us to have a strong hearing on, on that tonight, as well as the thing that happened with Westminster Oaks. And I'm just feeling, I want to talk about the 32304, which was agenda item 20. I'm just feeling that, I don't want to get on nobody's nerves, and y'all probably got stuff too. And I'm pondering if you'd allow me to ask the county attorney if we wanted to continue tonight's meeting. I looked at our staff, and, I mean, well, they look like that all the time, poker face, but I think one or two of them might be out of gas, like, maybe we're feeling. What can we do to continue with the important issues, in particular with this gun situation? What can we do to come back here and continue our meeting tonight?
Majority of the vote would have to vote to continue the meeting. It would take board action.
Ms. Chairman, I wouldn't disrespect the chairman, but Mr. Chairman, I'm, I mean, if this board were considered such, I, I really do, really do want to talk about the fairground extensively. I got big questions, and I'm not sure that we, our stamina towards, we just put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and I'll shut up talking. But I'd like to make that motion that we continue this meeting till Thursday at 3:00.
Commissioner Proctor, you can, you can, I guess you can make the motion. I mean, I'll let you make the motion, I'm not interested in that personally.
All right.
Um, is there a second to that motion? Seeing none, I think we need to try and work to finish this agenda in a timely manner. And then, I'm not sure particularly what issue you're talking about. I think in commissioner time, if you want to ask for an agenda item to come back in October, that would be the right form, because then we could look at the issue, because I'm not really sure what you're talking about, the fairgrounds, if, unless you're talking about the fairgrounds issue that we had talked about at blueprint.
As, as well as the open carry decision.
Yeah, I would not be prepared to vote on anything associated with that until I saw some kind of, like, agenda item.
Right. Madam Attorney, what is, what is, when does Cinderella have to go home?
11:00.
11:00.
If, if the board.
We would need a motion to.
Otherwise, the board would have to take a motion to continue it instead of dates, a, a time certain, and if you get to that point and you're not done yet, you reconvene at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Very good. Okay, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for staff recommendation of item number 26, with the exclusion of option, well, on option three, I would, during, as part of my motion, I would suggest that we let the committee bring back things to us, rather than us giving direction to them as to what we want them to do.
Okay, so we're on item number 26 right now?
Yes.
Okay. Can, you want to, let's try to get through this, you guys, if you don't mind, before 11:00, and see if we can get it done. Do you want to introduce that item?
Sure. I'll be very brief, Commissioners. As you know, this item seeks your appointment of the Charter Review Committee. It also seeks your acceptance of their bylaws. And again, as Commissioner Maddox just noted, whether or not the board wishes to give the, the committee any express issues to, to deliberate, we are recommending options one, two, and of course, we'll seek your direction on three. Let me just check very quickly, Commissioners. We have one speaker on option 26, but it was Stanley Sims, and I was looking for him and didn't see him.
Yes, Stanley.
So, there are no speakers on this item.
All right, Commissioners, if we do, if we go down the road of picking items that we want brought back, it can be timely. So, just keep that in mind, obviously, you can do whatever you want to do. You, you add the motion.
I made, I made the motion.
One and two, and then?
One, two, and we will allow the committee, we will not send direction, allow them to do their work. Because as I understand it, Madam Attorney, if there's any time during the process, we can send something, but.
I'll second that for getting us in the right.
Thank you. My appointments for record would be Darryl Jones, Sean Pittman, and Shamario Robinson would be my, my appointments.
What was that last one?
Shamario Robinson.
Could you tell us something about their background? Shamario.
Uh, no, we're going to do this, and then we'll vote on all of it.
Shamario Robinson is a former DOH secretary, also was with, what's the name of that guy? Not Accenture. It's long, it's been a long night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
She's also the chair of the, the chamber right now?
Yes, she's also the chair of, of Family Partners in the Big Bend. She's, she's heavily involved in healthcare, healthcare administration.
That ain't her name.
Shamario Robinson.
That's her name.
Shamario Robinson.
Commissioner Maddox. All right, Commissioner O'Keefe, you're up.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just start off by spitting out my names. It'll be Ryan Ray, Dr. Howard Kessler, and Dr. Bruce Strobel Jr.
Does Kessler live in Leon County?
Yes, he does.
Former Will Calla County Commissioner, isn't he?
Yeah, but he lives here now because he loves it, and we do such a great job, but he wants to make sure we keep doing it. And the sake of time, though, the, the, I take issue with option two in this point. In the bylaws, there are, comparing it to 2018 to now, the process for getting the minimum threshold of votes is, our citizens have a majority on the committee to talk about an issue, but it used to be that a simple majority would make a public hearing for citizens to come there and speak and get a public input on it. This new bylaw makes it a two-thirds, just to get something for the public hearing for our citizen committee members to hear what the public thinks about this. Then, that also means it takes a two-thirds vote to get it out of the citizens committee back to us. That is not different, that happened last time too. So, I think it's an important issue, but I'm gauging the temperature of the room. Here's my thought. We should not put the threshold for our citizens committee to send us amendments higher than the threshold for us or the threshold for voters. So, we're giving, we're appointing citizens that we trust to come up with amendments that the voters want. But we should only require them the same simple majority threshold to send items to us.
That's a motion.
That's, uh, substitute.
I second it there.
Okay, with the same of the names. Because we only need 50%, and then the voters only need 50%.
All right. You want to articulate that substitute motion?
Sure.
So it's one, two?
One and two, amending the bylaws for a simple majority is what's required for an amendment to come to us out of the citizens committee.
That's seconded by Commissioner Proctor?
Yep.
All those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying?
Oh, what point, point? This, that would be under Article VI, clause 6.12, Madam Attorney, and clause 6.13 would specifically change that from two-thirds to a simple majority. Okay, very good.
Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No. So, that is, passes 5-2 with Mr., Commissioner Maddox and myself in dissent. So, we, we have a substitute motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was voting on the substitute motion, so.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, did, I didn't mean to vote on the motion.
Mr. Chair, is it?
Sorry.
The motion passed, one and two has passed, but now we need to.
We're still picking our people. I got you, I'm sorry. I did not, that's fine.
Madam Attorney, to be, or can we, can we appoint the people now?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Did the, did the simple majority pass?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, sorry, I called that vote too early, I'm glazed. Let's pick our people. Commissioner Proctor, you want to go?
Sure. Jared Terry, Dr. Jared Terry, he was here tonight and sat through the meeting for a Max Harrell. And Temple Robinson, Dr. Temple Robinson.
All right. Commissioner Caban, you want to go?
Yes, my, my first one will be Slaton Murray. My second one will be Katrina Tuggerson. My third one will be Barry Wilcox.
Oh, Barry. All right, Commissioner Minor?
Anita Favors, Joey Davis, and Heidi Otway.
All right, and Commissioner Cummings?
Dr. Henry Lewis, Attorney Lundabon Edwards, and Chauncey Haines.
All right. And I'm going to pick former Commissioner Mary Ann Lindley, William Smith, Capesy Bank, and Liz Ellis from Sterns Weaver. All right.
Do you need a, do you need a motion?
Do you need anything else on that? Yeah, so, can we? Yeah, we got a motion and a second for these 21 members of the CRC. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, a point of information in terms of the terms. These terms extend from October to February. Is that an accurate length of service? And then it would be on call, I imagine, up, up until, up into the summer. Is that accurate?
Mr. Chairman?
So their work will be done in a four-month period?
Nikki can provide clarification?
Yes, so their committee meetings will begin in October and run through February. Then, if and when they want to advance an issue to public hearing, those will be conducted in June and July.
So, when you say community meetings, what, what does that mean? Are they meeting in this room, or are they going out to J. April Park?
So, since it is a 21-member group, we have to relocate them to the main library just due to their size, and they'll, they will be meeting biweekly, beginning in October through February.
Okay. And subsequent to February, they will be in an on-call posture? Is that?
No, it's, it's if they do advance their issues to public hearing, then yes. It will be essentially, they'll be waiting until June to conduct their public hearings.
At some point, I, I just need clarity as to when there's termination to their services. And whatever they say think after that period is extinguished and no longer counts, can take effect. And there's no clear date of when, what's, what's the majority on 21?
Commissioner, Commissioner Proctor? I, I can answer your question?
Yeah.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so it's going to depend. If they don't advance anything to public hearing, then their work will end in February after their committee meetings, after their community meetings. If they advance anything to public hearing, then they will, again, do those in July, June and July. They have a deadline by which they have to submit their recommendations to our board so that we can meet our deadline to, for have this board consider them, vote on them, and get them to the supervisor elections for potential inclusion on the ballot. So, it depends on the activities of the board, but no later than July of next year, after their third public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. The status of some of the recommendations of the seven that we've, we've come up with, are these that the staff has made, you know, written their little pieces, some of them they've suggested no to. What is the posture of annexation of all unincorporated properties inside of capital circle into the city? And each of these has a, a writing. Are these all dead? Have staff have killed it? Did this commission kill it in the adoption of what staff said? Where, where are these matters now? These seven points that we want to discuss by the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the board asks staff to review certain potential proposals to provide to the CERC for consideration. The legal analysis is before you about those topics that the board previously identified. Most of them, you are conflicted or preempted by state law. So, I mean, the analysis is there, but we can go into detail on anyone that you would like.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. We're on item number 28, Commissioners. I'm sorry, did you want to talk on that? Okay?
I, I have a, um. Did we talk about on, on this last item with the Charter Review, the ability to, whether or not we want to send certain topics for the, for the Charter Review Committee to discuss?
Yeah, we, we said no to that.
Well, uh, when did we say no to it? Because we, there was a vote for option one and two, there was an option for number one and two with the substitute, but I don't think we discussed whether or not we want to.
I thought that was included, I'm sorry.
It was included in my motion, I said that.
Right.
Not.
That's what I thought.
Right, but his motion.
Okay.
Commissioners, listen, we're the, Commissioners, we're the, we're the ones doing this work up here every single day, and I think that there's some things that we see. And I think that there's some things that we see naturally that some citizens do not see. And I think it's important. There were some good topics, quite frankly, that I think we said had staff review, such as, you know, Commissioner Proctor, you talked about utility authority. Um, there's, you know, more importantly, what I, what I think is important to us is, um, right now, the, the possibility that county ordinances do not supersede city ordinances. And so, um, I guess to be in proper, I guess to be in proper po, of posture, I would, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion that we also, um, provide direction to, uh, to staff on potential charter amendment issues to be advanced to the CERC for further consideration. And then I'm going to, I'll go through those, but that's.
Well, I mean, that's what I was saying earlier. If we get into that, this could be a prolonged debate and discussion and we got to be out of here in an hour and 10 minutes or stop.
Well, then can we just talk about one?
If you want to talk about one, everybody might want to.
I got a better one.
What are you going to make?
When, when do they start their work, the CRC?
October.
October. Um, when is our next commission meeting?
October, like, seventh or eighth or ninth?
Special meeting next week, just related to adopting your final budget.
Perfect. Can we, can we bring back this third item to be discussed? That I, I would make a motion that we bring back the advancing of issues, um, to the CRC from this board to come back during our special meeting as an agenda item prior to us, uh.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll second that.
When's our special meeting?
Next week.
It's next Tuesday. All right, next Tuesday, the public hearing.
Okay, cool, man. It sounds good to me.
Appreciate it.
All right, we got a motion to bring back these, the items about Commissioner's suggestions for the CRC at the September 23rd special meeting. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and pass it. Who was the second?
He was.
I seconded.
Okay, all right, got it?
Move staff recommendation on item number 28?
28. We've got a motion for staff recommendation. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing, uh, Commissioner Cummings, did you want to discuss? You're in my queue.
No.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. Uh, sorry for those who've been waiting on our number twen, or item 29. I'm sorry, we tried. Uh, we're here now, though. All right. Uh, yes, Commissioner O'Keefe, go right ahead.
Uh, first, if you can record my vote in the affirmative on.
The Commissioner items to come back at the special meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Um, for this one, I, uh, we had one person, Giovanna Williams, who was hanging around as long as she could to fit herself with the board.
Second.
Thank you. So, uh, I move staff recommendation for all the appointments, which is end of month. One, three, four, five, six.
And seven.
And seven. There's all three appointments.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for all those options that Mr. O'Keefe just laid out. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
It, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for hanging out.
All right, um, I move option two to appoint Jarvis Benjamin Watkins. And then I move option eight to appoint Giovanna Williams to the COCA.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second for options number two, Jarvis Watkins and number eight Giovanna Williams. All those in, or any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. No, no opposition. All right, uh, did we make it through? Oh, man. Okay, Commissioners, uh, do we have any citizens to be heard on non-agenda items? Mr. Administrator?
We, uh, we do not. Mr. Chairman?
All right, we have, uh, comments for discussion from the county attorney.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I previously provided, uh, memorandum update to the board on, uh, the status of the opioid litigation. Um, the board had previously approved a settlement, uh, for, um, the Purdue Pharma case, but, uh, after that, uh, that was invalidated, uh, by the court because it provided some protections for the Sackler family that, um, ultimately were determined not to be within the authority of the bankruptcy court. Um, a new, uh, proposed settlement is, is back, um, with different terms. Um, as outlined in the memo, um, there would be, uh, additional monies that would be provided as part of that settlement. Um, and also, uh, basically it would, um, contain adjunctive relief regarding opioid dispensing practices and it would require Purdue Pharma LP to implement additional safeguards to prevent diversion of prescribed opioids and restrict cer, certain members of the Sackler family from engaging in the manufacturing and sale of opioids. Um, if you agree to that settlement, I would also request authority to sign, uh, the Purdue General Entity and Shareholder Direct Settlement Agreement on behalf of the county. Um, there are also potential proposed new settlements, uh, with, uh, nine manufact, additional manufacturers. They are, they're all listed in the memo. Um, and if you agree, uh, to the terms of those settlements, um, then I would ask for authority to also sign the participation agreements, uh, for those new manufacturer settlements on behalf of Leon County as well.
So move.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for the recommendations of the county attorney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Madam Attorney?
Thank you. If nothing else for the board?
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Very, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, very quickly, earlier tonight, um, Commissioners, I was hoping to get a little, uh, additional direction from the board. Mr. Chairman, if, if you could, uh, call for a motion on this one. But back on item number 19, you'll recall that you provided for an amended motion relative to the landscaping with the city, uh, to have that interlocal agreement for one year. This is an issue of some, uh, important, um, timing. And so I would just ask if that interlocal agreement is not successful, if you would give me the authorization to issue an RFP for the, for the.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. So you have the authority. Anything else? All right, Commissioners, we're going to start with Commissioner Caban and work our way down on this, on Commissioner time.
Uh, Commissioners, I, I will reserve my comments for the next meeting for the sake of brevity. I know we've been here for a long time. Great meeting. It's good to be back with you guys. Looking forward to seeing you all next week.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, Commissioner Maddox?
Request a proclamation, uh, for Rudy Ferguson, Pastor Rudy Ferguson Senior, for his 50th pastory anniversary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Uh, request staff to look into the excessive laudering at the gas station near the Collin neighborhood. I met with a constituent recently who had a major concern about the laudering and its impact on the neighborhood. It's, uh, the AMI store, Marathon Gas Station located at 1410 Lake Bradford Road. Alongside the store, there's an open area wherein a park-like atmosphere has been created. People are standing, are seated in their lawn chairs and there is a, uh, discarded sofa on the roadside. I drove by it yesterday about 4:30 and, um, that's why I observed out there. I would have, uh, been noticed by laudering if I had taken a picture, but I did not take a picture. Uh, but we did have a constituent that was pretty serious about wanting us to do something out there. So can we have staff look into that?
Sure, we don't need a motion for that, do we? All right.
Aye.
So I got it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we didn't have a meeting last month. So I, I want to thank the Chair and the members of the Commission for the proclamation. You forgot, the proclamation you gave me in July.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, at my birthday celebration.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank all of you guys for coming. And though Commissioner O'Keefe was out of town, but everybody else came. Mr. County Administrator, appreciate you all coming. Um, it was a great celebration. I had the opportunity last month and I want to thank Sheriff McNeil for allowing me to do a ride along with the host deputy team. And as you all know, I'm particularly interested in homeless females, you know, being on the street and what have you. But it was a great experience. Um, Chief Majors organized it. Uh, and then there were two, uh, deputy, deputy sellers and Deputy Pacelio, uh, accompanied us. And it was awesome. And we, I had the opportunity to see them engage a homeless female. And I mean, it's awesome how they, um, have a team approach and they called different, different groups, came out, engaged her, and she actually agreed, um, to receive services, housing services as well as mental health services. So it was just, it was just a great opportunity to see them, um, in action. And I just want to commend the host deputy team for all they do for our homeless population. And that population knows them by, by, um, by first name. And we had, it was a, a clip, but I don't see it. It's probably passed. But, uh, I appreciate the county, um, and this administration and my, my county, um, Commissioners supporting the extra money for the host deputies. That's all I have. Great meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. And Commissioner Cummings, my look-alike, Commissioner Welch, Chairman Welsh, he said he represented me at the party.
He did. He did.
I'm one of them suspenders, though.
I just, I just have three proclamation requests. Uh, proclamation honoring Chair's Little League nine-to-11-year-old All-Stars team for winning the national title at the Tournament of State Champions in Wilson, North Carolina.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Uh, proclamation recognizing the 45th anniversary season of the Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra to be presented at the next meeting here.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Gary said he'll perform. Uh, and finally, a proclamation requested by the Capital Area Healthy Start Coalition recognizing October's National SIDS Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month to be presented by me at their October 9th Candlelight Walk.
Motion from Commissioner Minor, second. Commissioner Maddox, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Um, Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have three things. I'll be, try to be as quick as I can. Um, in August, I attended the Florida Regional Council's Association, uh, in Tampa. Um, the travel schedule for fiscal year '25 was approved in September 2024, but this particular event wasn't on it, so I'd like to have a motion to approve travel expenses for that event.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for travel expenses. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, passes unanimously.
Next one is a proclamation to recognize Suicide Prevention Month. This will be presented at a 211 Big Bend event and not at a commission meeting.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner O'Keefe. Second, Commissioner Maddox, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thanks. And finally, um, last week, you may have, uh, seen the story on this. Um, a car crashed and flipped over on North Monroe Street near the Golden Corral Restaurant. Uh, there were Golden Corral employees and customers that ran out of the restaurant and helped pull the family out of the car. And, um, um, just wanted to go ahead and have a proclamation for the folks that, that lent assistance to that family.
So move.
All right, we've got a motion, uh, Commissioner O'Keefe, second by Commissioner Caban. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, before you go, I'm going to run real quick and then you can have it till 11 o'clock. Um, I'd like to ask for a motion, um, to, for a proclamation for the 13U and 14U Babe Ruth baseball teams who won their world, respective World Series.
Motion.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Uh, I'd like to also request a proclamation recognizing Carl Hook for 30 years of service with the Bradfordville Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe, second, Commissioner Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. And, and lastly, for me, uh, I know there's nowhere else, uh, that my great aide Kyle Frost would rather be on his birthday than here till, uh, 10 or 11 or so. So happy birthday, Kyle Frost. All right, Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioners, I'm asking for, uh, resolution recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. Uh, so move.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I give a shout out to Coach Norvell and the, uh, Florida State Seminoles. One of the, probably one of the more memorable, um, um, impressionable, um, meetings of all time. And Dope Campbell ranks up there. And, um, I don't have a proclamation, but just a shout out, congratulations, Florida State beating Alabama.
Let's go.
Amen. Um, I would like a, um, uh, on our next meeting for county attorney to please, uh, provide us a status of the first District Court of Appeals ruling, uh, that, uh, the open carry law is violated in the Second Amendment. Um, I believe that this portends, um, serious consequences, uh, for the state of Florida and with so many young people here, uh, green lighting, the carrying of weapons, uh, on campuses and everywhere is frightening. And I will ask a, an amendment item that would give us an update on that.
Do we need, you don't need a motion?
There's a motion.
Go ahead.
Not to get into a long-winded discussion about this, but, uh, the Attorney General did issue some guidance today since, uh, this is now, uh, the law. He made very clear that the, a specific statute was invalidated as unconstitutional, but that that does not impact the applicability of other statutes that still regulate who can carry a firearm legally, okay? Uh, places where there are limits on where you can carry a firearm, currently including at colleges and universities, uh, and also, uh, the courthouse and county commission meetings, uh, but also, um, the manner in which you can carry them in some instances. So I just didn't want Commissioner Proctor's statement to, to be, uh, a source of misinformation for anybody that now they can go out and carry open carry guns on a school campus. Just wanted to clarify that.
Very good. And, uh, in today's paper, when you saw the number of sheriffs across the state who saying that they would not enforce the law, um, my interpretation was that they weren't going to enforce it. So if you have law enforcement declaring that they are not going to enforce, uh, any kind of laws, arrest nobody at all for carrying law, uh, guns, uh, it seemed like it was open season from their, um, their comments in today's paper. Thank you very much. Um, that right there is so squiggly and wiggly. Commissioners, on the fairground issue, I had, um, significant, but I'm curtailing. I'm asking, uh, maybe that we could talk around the notions of, uh, what kind of agreement that we have. Um, I got a lot of people ain't happy with, uh, the fairgrounds, uh, decision to, uh, um, to, um, give a, a package of gifts to the former, uh, manager. Uh, there was a lot of concerns there. And I like to see an issue on our relationship with the fair. Uh, I don't believe that we should put $30 million of public money, uh, into the fairground. And this fair association tends to think that they're, they don't have to abide by, um, public sunshine rules. Uh, there's no transparency. Uh, I don't know how you account for monies with all these poor children going down there, leaving thousands of dollars, uh, for 10 days. Uh, there's no accountability. And I'm not willing, um, the current, um, arrangement that we have to upgrade a facility by $30 million and we don't get a, nothing but a dollar. Um, I, I know that in a previous generation of, uh, county commissioners that desire for agricultural education to expand, uh, I'm not sure that we're in that same moment. But, um, the comments received, um, that I've received, and my district don't complain. Uh, we live and let live, but people are not happy about the, um, watch, about Watchgate. And then, um, this relationship.
Commissioner Proctor, can I interrupt you for a second? I think the County Administrator, and I, you know, I agree with you on this issue. I think we, he can sort of frame an agenda item we might can ask for.
My motion.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Proctor, it'd be helpful if you would offer a motion, or another one of your Commissioners would, to direct staff to bring back the terms, uh, that we'd be seeking in a renegotiated lease, specifically for board approval, because I know the board may have some strong feelings on that. It'd be help us to get that guidance from you and, uh, we would prepare such an item for your consideration.
That right there is my motion.
Second.
Can I add to that, Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, sir.
Um, can we look at the terms of the current agreement and look at, sort of, get like an overview of the history of the Fair Association and how we got to where we are? And what are options for the Fair Association, you know, letting, you know, having Leon County become more active in the role of the fairgrounds in terms of the management and oversight of the fairgrounds? Can we add that to the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
As part of an item?
That would, would, would include, again, once we get your direction on the lease terms, it would include, uh, an overview of the structure and authority of the existing fair. it would include, uh, an overview of the structure and authority of the existing fairgrounds and if the board might wish to seek, um, legislative changes that would give us more authority in that realm.
Absolutely.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Proctor. I got you.
Um, the flea market, um, replacement issue, was that supposed to come back tonight? The flea market, the whole notion of, um, of, um, food, its accessibility and all of that? Is that coming to the next meeting?
It was on tonight's agenda.
It was?
Yes, the, uh, the food insecurity item.
Okay. What number was it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Huh? 21.
Commissioner Proctor, while you're looking at, can Commissioner Caban jump in on this?
Sir?
Commissioner Caban would like to comment while you look at that. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead. Let me see.
Commissioner Caban, you want to comment on the fairgrounds thing?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I did some, my own, just digging on this. I spoke to the county attorney. I asked, copy the lease? And I've just kind of looked at, um, kind of done my own, just research online, um, about, you know, who has authority over what with the North Florida Fair Association? And unfortunately, our current lease doesn't give us much leeway, Commissioner Proctor. Um, however, it is my interpretation that the department, the Florida Department of Agriculture oversees fair associations, Madam Attorney.
That's correct.
And could theoretically, by the posture that they took by spending money on a retirement gift such as a watch with that dollar amount, could that be in violation of any local laws related that govern fair, fair associations?
Well, there, there aren't any local laws that govern them.
I'm sorry, state law.
Potentially. I mean, there's the provision in Section 616.07, subsection two, for example, that talks about the fact that all of their monies and property are public property and are to be used for the benefit of putting on the fair. But again, if an entity has jurisdiction, the entity that has jurisdiction over fair associations is the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. If someone wants to, to make an ethics complaint or an ethics referral for the contribution by the fair association vendor, that would not be directed to this body. It would go to the Commission on Ethics for determination of whether, in fact, uh, the Code of Ethics applies and if so, whether there was a violation that occurred there.
So the violation that occurred, that would not, would it be in our, that would not be reported to the Department of Ag?
If it's an ethics violation and they're subject to the Code of Ethics, it would go to the Commission on Ethics. Only five people and entities can make referrals. The governor, the cabinet, the inspector general, uh, the state attorney and the US state attorney, I believe. There are only five. Based on the change in the law from a couple of years ago, to file a complaint, which anybody can do, you need more than hearsay. So you can't just rely on a newspaper article to file a Commission on Ethics complaint anymore. You have to have something more than just what you read in a newspaper. Are there people who might have that firsthand knowledge who would want to file a complaint? Sure. But again, you, they would need firsthand knowledge, something more than what's in the newspaper.
Commissioner Proctor, so what, I, I like your motion. However, you know, renegotiating the lease doesn't really, I mean, what, what real authority do we have to make them renegotiate a lease?
Well.
So what I'm, uh, Ms.
I, I, two things. I'd say two things to your question.
So what I'm getting at is, it's my interpretation, based on what they did, they violated state law. I mean, she just, I mean, they used.
Yeah, the statute she just referenced.
They, they used.
No, ma'am.
So that's, Commissioner Proctor, what I'm getting at is, you know, they've, they've, they violated state law by, by spending money on something like that. I think we have the grounds to also, you know, as a board, have discussed whether or not there's other routes we want to take here.
On point. Just real quick. As I read it, money was donated to buy the watch in the amount of $18,000 specifically for that cost. Now, Madam Attorney, they're a pri, they're a private organization. Monies that are, that are given to them are supposed to be used for the, the purposes of the fairgrounds. Now, if, if money is donated to them, um, restricted specifically for the use that they used it for, would they still be in violation? Cause.
That would be a determination made by the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, which has jurisdiction over fair associations. And it would determine whether or not they violated any of the statutes.
So what, what I was getting at is, Commissioner Proctor, maybe we include in your motion, we ask, uh, we, we ask the chairman, the board director, the county administrator, to send a letter to the Department of Ag and just have them investigate it. If they're the overseeing authority at the state that oversees fair associations, what I'm getting at is, yes, I think we can ask the county administrator to go and negotiate a lease. However, it's my interpretation, based on how they spent the money, they violated state law. Why don't we ask a state agency to investigate it? I mean, that, that's to me, it seems like.
I'm, I'm, I appreciate it, Commissioner Caban. And you definitely, uh, uh, not bringing a plastic bat to play hardball. I, I respect that. Um, I'm not, I'm disinterested in, in, in that, that approach because point of the matter is that, um, next month, it gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars turned over. I, I don't, I never seen a computer down there. They're still selling tickets, you know, breaking off, you know, like this little thingy right here, you know, ticket. You know, accountability today. Uh, I think that this is an unconscionable agreement that we're in. It's unconscionable to give away 100 acres in the heart of the state capital, Florida, for $1. Uh, number two, um, what goes on mostly in terms of commercial, that, that, that agreement was in the nature and in the spirit, the heart of an agricultural presentation for a fair, uh, which is, used to be seven days. Now it's 10 days. Uh, but the nature and the purpose for which we leased the agreement is all outside and well beyond, um, agricultural education. Um, dog shows, um, gee, um, gun shows. There's nothing in, in, in that lease that contemplates. We were giving that away for a fair, the, the, to make ouahoua, gua-balabas of money. That's, that's just crazy. And they have so much money. I mean, so much. There is not a problem to contemplate a 40-some thousand dollar watch. A lot of people, to be honest with you, are, um, from what I've been told, really didn't know that the fair, uh, manager makes $174,000. I mean, quite frankly, I didn't know. Um, these are the issues of which this board is blocked from. But like suckers, um, like we raising $12 million for the city. The city's for profit. We are also raising and allowing the fair to make millions of dollars every year. We don't even know what going on. And they got enough money to give somebody $5,000 for a watch. Hell, they got a lot of money. And we, they're outside the scope of what our original agreement anticipated. And I'm suggesting, and then third component, uh, Commissioner Cummings, walk with me. We, we, we ought not bestow an unjust enrichment. Uh, and this is truly the bestowing of an unjust enrichment upon an association uh, that has our name and, um, you know, and, but they're not under any control under the auspices. And some folk believe last week that the county commission, um, has something to do with the watch. I said, no, that's not Vince Long's watch. We didn't give him, you know, that. But that's a difference. Leon County Fair. And folk confused because they heard the word Leon County. Vince, um, we gave you a watch that, well, we won't talk about your watch, Vince, but anyway.
Vince ain't got no watch.
That kind of thing. So those are the, the, those are the bases of which, and, and Commissioner Caban, this isn't about, this is about the county taking, taking leadership, uh, taking our land. And if you read today's paper, uh, the Capital City Country Club, which is in one of those $1 leases, um, that was really cute. They, they appraised the 18-hole golf course for $1 million. I mean, that was amazing. Um, but they, they, they can't make it. They can't make ends meet paying $1. What do they want to pay? $1? So with, with these juxtapositions of dollar leases, the city and the hospital and FSU, this is a new era. And the county needs to be in charge of our own dirt, running the show and putting in our own board. Right now, I don't even know how you get on the fairground board. Do y'all? I don't know.
No, sir. I don't know.
Me neither.
Um, Commissioner Proctor, can we, are we, so just so we're in the right understanding, we're, we got an agenda item coming back?
Yes, sir.
Looking at the lease, looking at all available. Can you include in that, like, options? Can you include like an option to write a letter to the Department of Agriculture and ask them to investigate this fair association? Like, can those be options in our agenda item? Like, can we just have some options in the agenda item? Commissioner Proctor, that's all I want.
The agenda item, the, the motion has already been made and passed, correct?
No, we haven't voted on it.
We haven't voted on it?
No, sir.
Okay.
We're in discussion. Did you want to discuss?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
In the motion right now, I want to make sure three things are there, Mr. Administrator. The, the proposed lease and the terms, uh, the fairground structure and overview, and any legislative remedies that we might pursue. All those things are there, correct?
Correct.
All right. As far as, as far as the watch, the money, and if they did anything wrong, I don't, Commissioner Proctor, you, I'm not necessarily, look, if it was, it was $18,000, as I read it, it was $18,000 restricted gift specifically for the watch to be given to.
It was, um, can I, can I just, it was $10,000 from a vendor, $18,000 from fair funds.
$18,000. Okay. Thank you for the correction. If, rather than ask them to investigate, we could simply ask for an opinion. An opinion is short of investigation, correct? Madam Attorney?
I doubt you're gonna get an opinion out of the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. They're not in the business of giving people.
I really just want us to focus on the lease, the remedies that we may have, and how we may, how we may be able to move forward with, uh, the, the, the structure of the lease and how we can, we can have some accountability there if that's what we're trying to get to. This other issue of, of the watch and wrongdoing and if they violating in ethics is, I think it's a whole separate issue. I think this, this focused issue is the one I would like for us to focus on. Commissioner Proctor, what I would like is if we could get through the motion that speaks specifically about the lease, then if you guys want to make another motion talking about, you know, the, the investigation, then I would, I would like for that to be separate. But what I would like for is just the, the motion that you got on the floor that's talking about the lease and the things that you asked for, that we, that we take that up first. Well, and, and as an aspect of, uh, due process, I think that it's premature to ask for an investigation. But with what comprehensively each of our voices have, uh, are blended to staff, uh, I think that the next meeting, if we, you know, where there's smoke, there's fire. But let's at least get more information before we ask for an investigation, I think.
I think you're in the right posture for that, Commissioner Proctor. Good. Commissioner Caban?
Yeah. Commissioner Proctor, I'm, I'm following your lead on this. You and, uh, I'm following your lead on this. Um, as a board, I do want to say this. This is something I think, as we get in the next fiscal year, we have got to get some common ground and improve on. Any nonprofit that is receiving Leon County taxpayer dollars, and in this instance, receiving a lease for $1 a year is a benefit from Leon County taxpayers that a nonprofit is benefiting from. So in my eyes, this is no different than us giving them, you know, $250,000 a year, which the market value of that lease is probably $30,000 to $40,000 a month. And so we have got to get to a posture where with these nonprofits, and a lot of them do great work, but if they're benefiting from taxpayer dollars, we have got to maintain a level of oversight. Because what the chairman just said is that they received a donation from a vendor for a retirement gift for a retiring CEO. That is unethical. I, I just want to say that. That is unethical. Someone who is a vendor who is receiving contracts, on the way out, is giving a gift. So let's just call it what it is. That is unethical. And they're benefiting from taxpayer dollars. So I want to be clear about what we're talking about. Anytime there's a nonprofit that is benefiting from taxpayer dollars, we have to hold them accountable because we owe that to the public. And what's happened right now, I get it, okay? Like, it, it probably was done in good intentions. But that does not mean it was not wrong. You understand what I'm getting at?
Well, that's why four or five board members quit.
So. For sure.
More than you thought it was wrong.
100%.
The sheriff left.
100%.
Another folk left.
So.
So we the only one think something bad happened.
Yeah, I agree with you. So, so what I'm getting at, Commissioners, is, listen, this, we do a lot of great things. There's a lot of nonprofits that do a lot of great things. But I don't think there's enough oversight when it comes to this. Are we, are we checking that every single nonprofit is issuing an RFP, right? Are we going, are we going through those motions? I think it's wrong, you know, this is, this is a, 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 I think it's worse that it was a vendor that just made a contribution on the way out and said, hey, thanks. I think we should also look at, who was the vendor? And how much money did they receive in contracts over the last five years? Like, there's some big questions that need to be asked here, right? Not the, so there's, you know, Commissioner Proctor, I'm following your lead here. However, I, I think that there's more that needs to be discussed, not just with, with the fair association. I think across the board, any nonprofit receiving taxpayer dollars or benefiting from taxpayer services, we have to hold the standard high. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Administrator, I got, I got just a few questions. Did we buy that land?
No, the, that, the fairgrounds associated, it goes, goes back to the 1950s. But the, the fairgrounds association bought the land or people representing them at the time that became the fairgrounds association, bought the land, conveyed it to the county.
Did we pay for the buildings?
Not to my understanding.
How much taxed out, how much of our, our tax dollars have gone into the fairground?
There are not taxpayer dollars going. The question becomes what your future investment through blueprint would be.
Right. So my point is, until this point, we have not put a dime. They bought the land. They built the buildings. The way it was structured, they had to give it to us. In order for them to be able to, to have the association that they have, we leased it back to them for a dollar. It wasn't even our land.
We do provide some, some basic maintenance out there.
We provide some basic maintenance. I, I take that. But it ain't, it ain't like we put millions and put millions of dollars there, because we didn't. I, the point that, that Commissioner Proctor has, I totally agree with, is if we're going to invest $30 million there, then we need to look at the agreement because up until this point, we haven't had a major investment in the fair. It's been them. But now when we talking about giving you $30 million, we gotta have some skin in the game. So that's what had to change. So everything we're talking about here, we're talking about was taxpayer dollars. We need to hold them accountable. No. They bought the land, built the buildings. They gave it to us. We leased it back to them for a dollar. Okay, now we're at a point where we're talking to them about, hey, we're gonna put $30 million in it because it's Leon County's, uh, fairground. Okay, if we're gonna do that, let's look at this lease, change it up, and maybe even charge a little more for the lease because we're, we're, we're putting $30 million in. That's why we're at this point. That's why I'm supporting the motion on the floor is because we, we do have to renegotiate the lease before we put that money in. It runs concurrent, the renegotiation of the lease runs concurrent with the $30 million investment. That's why we heard a blueprint, correct, Mr. Administrator? So there is no investment until the lease is renegotiated, correct, Mr. Administrator? So we're in the right, we're in the right space here. Even before this 18,000, even before this watch stuff happened, we were in the right space. So all I'm saying is, let's not cloud it up with the watch. If y'all want to take up the watch, you can take up the watch after we, after we finish this voting on the, the motion that's on the floor. But not, not when we're talking about straight up business. We, we're gonna put $30 million in. We want some say. Let's see what that looks like. So I think those are two different issues. That's all I'm saying. We can, we can talk about it all day, but let's, let's make it a separate issue. Let's just, let's just keep this on the lease. Cause it runs concurrent with our investment. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, you want to?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I made that motion. Um, there are fact, uh, factual, historic, um, um, convoluted presentations that are not exactly my own. Uh, but I'll wait for, um, the staff narrative to come to us written. Um, certainly, I'm not old enough to remember the origin of the fair and all of that. But I've read, um, I've read a different narrative than, um, some of what I. I've read, um, I've read a different narrative than, um, some of what I've heard, uh, tonight. There's no doubt that we need to, um, and you're correct, I mean, nobody's put investment on a piece of dirt. And not even to the point, as you've heard me say frequently, that we got five outdoor bathroom, we need, no, no investment. That's the point, that's why I've been saying what I'm saying, where's the beef? And I think that before we, we've gathered and collected thirty million dollars, but I just thought that we'd get one bathroom indoor before a watch go out for twenty-five thousand dollars, I just, so I'm, I'm comfortable with where we are and I thank you for your, um, open-mindedness. Um, did we, you-
We need to vote, but Commissioner O'Keefe is in the queue, uh, Commissioner, or Commissioner Proctor, so, you good, all right? Commissioner Caban, you're in the queue.
Yeah, I'll just, my last sentiment, Commissioner Proctor, I'm following your lead on this. Commissioner Madder, I, I hear you loud and clear. My, I'm sorry.
All good.
Yeah, yeah. I apologize, yes, it's like-
Been a long night.
Yeah, um, I, I hear what you're getting at, Commissioner Maddox, on the, on the, you know, they, they conveyed the land to us, how I look at it, it's an asset that, that Leon County taxpayers currently own. And if you factor in what the, the dollar amount lease is going back to nineteen fifties, if you factor in one dollar a year, comparing that to what market rate opportunity cost is for that property, I am willing to bet, if we did that analysis, we have, the value that the fairgrounds has received is probably twenty X over time and inflation, what the value at that time, the property would have been dollar amount wise. However, again, I'm following y'all's lead, I agree with the sentiment, but I just, it is a, it is an asset that Leon County taxpayers own.
I agree, I think the opportunity cost is the thing to think about, but I, I, I think this is a starting point, Commissioner Proctor, and I think we're in a good posture. So do you want to call, we want to call a vote on it?
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Maddox was right when he said we may be a legislative, um, resolution, and earlier tonight I indicated that I think legislatively really is where we need to go next year as a, as a priority focus.
All right, uh, we've got a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, can you restate the motion, please?
Uh, we're asking for informational item, historical background, is that correct, on-
Yes, sir.
On the fairgrounds, how we got where we are, and then options for the lease renewal.
It would be, uh, a, a structural, an overview would come back to the board on the structure and authority of the fairgrounds, it would also include receiving board direction on the current, on the terms that we will be negotiating with them, uh, as a, as a condition of the blueprint investment.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Uh, motion maker was Commissioner Proctor, second was me, I think. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. All right, Commissioner Proctor, still you.
Mr. Chairman, this, um, seek, uh, motions saluting a resolution, uh, recognizing Patricia Proctor, uh, for her recent book, uh, Treasures in Clay Jars, um, and I'd like for us to give, uh, resolution to her on her new, um, her new book, Patricia Proctor.
Proclamation?
Is, is my mother.
Proclamation or resolution? Proclamation, okay, proclamation or resolution? I think proclamation, right?
The correct one, that's the one I was-
Yes, sir, all right, we got a motion and a second. Uh, motion is Commissioner, uh, Proctor, okay, okay, second, Commissioner Maddox, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, passes unanimously.
And, and then, um, um, on the three-two-three-oh-four, um, update on the food insecurity issue, um, I'd like to move forward, I want to thank this board for doing our retreat, indicating that three-two-three-oh-four and our staff support would be there. Uh, over the past summer months, um, my individual meetings with stakeholders in three-two-three-oh-four, um, there's a readiness to, again, reconvene, uh, stakeholders, uh, on the issue of, of, uh, moving forward, pastor, uh, pastor, um, um, what's his name?
Michael Bell.
Bell, Reverend Bell. Yeah, New Mount Zion pastor did the, the, yeah, it's getting late.
Your vacation.
Yeah, and, uh, he desires to host, um, and has offered his church, again, for Shenton Hour, moving to another three-two-three-oh-four. And I'd like to, um, for the board to trust the District One Commissioner to, um, lead and work with staff in terms of formatting, um, and, uh, leadership to this effort. Uh, that's just, that's not a motion, that's just, uh-
Just a thought.
And then the final, final thing, uh, commissioners, we talked about the flea market, we talked about flea market replacement, or flea market thingy, we talked about that already?
No.
Okay, we did, okay, good, good.
Twenty-one.
And then, um, my final, final, it, it breaks my heart to, um, say that I won't be going to the Congressional Black Caucus weekend this year. Um, um, just as a matter of objection to our nation's capital, being under military siege, um, is unacceptable. I don't want to spend money from this county, uh, our county, uh, in Washington DC as long as it is under military occupation. And, um, regrettably, um, I have friends that call me who are going and I've had to indicate that as a matter of conscience, um, I can't go to Congressional Black Caucus, uh, this, this year. Those things being said, thank you, Mr. Chairman, great meeting, great annual report, uh, wonderful time, I'm tired of looking at y'all right now, so I make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, Mr. Pro, what, what, I'm gonna do-
What? It stopped in mid-air. Come on, bring it down, bring it down, hit it, hit it.
All right, we adjourn.